One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Dominguez, Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario, Ralphs, Mayor Protem White.
Here. And item one. Whoops, we have, first of all, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you.
Item number one, proclamation honoring Women's Economic Ventures 25th Anniversary.
So, this is to honor the 25th anniversary of the Women's Economic Ventures. Whereas since its inception in 1991, Women's Economic Ventures has focused on creating a more equitable and just society through the economic empowerment of women. And whereas 86 percent of Women's Economic Ventures clients are women who benefit from programs designed to address the needs of entrepreneurs at different stages in the life cycle of a business. And whereas for 25 years, Women's Economic Ventures has provided business training, consulting, and loans to the Central Coast entrepreneurs through a variety of programs, including the loan program, serving small businesses that don't qualify for traditional bank lending, which has approved $4 million in loans today. And whereas Women's Economic Ventures offers business education through self-employment training and web and español, courses that cover the major aspects of operating a business. And whereas since 1991, Women's Economic Ventures has served over 2,000 Santa Barbara clients and helped start or expand over 2,000 local businesses, which has generated an estimated $146 million in annual sales revenues and created or sustained over 4,000 local jobs. Now, therefore, I, Bendy White, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor Protem of the City of Santa Barbara, hereby congratulate Women's Economic Ventures upon their 25th anniversary. I thank you for your positive impact on the Santa Barbara community and wish you many years more of success. Congratulations. And for the photo op, I thi-- and for the photo op, we ought to say, Say Cheese.
You're supposed to be the practiced one. Thank you so much, councilmembers, not only for this recognition, but for the support you've provided for Weave over the last 20 years through your CDBG funds. As I think most of you probably know, we initially started our microloan fund with $100,000 in CDBG grants from the city that have been since matched many times over by local banks, foundations, and individuals. I think more than ever, it's really important to support our local businesses. They're what makes our community unique. I always think of our program as kind of a grassroots business development program. Most of the people who come to us are people with roots in our community who want to stay in our community. They're not going to pull up stakes and move to another state as soon as they become successful. So I want to thank you so much for your support and your continuing support for Women's Economic Ventures. And we have some gifts for you, a little bit of chocolate from one of our businesses, Chocolat du Kelly Bresson, you already mentioned Say Cheese, and a shopping bag to remind you to shop local on Small Business Saturday over the Thanksgiving weekend and every day, hopefully. And then also in there, there's a 25-year impact report that I hope that you'll take some time to look at. Thank you again.
Right, thank you. So we move on to public comment, and the first person is Luis Ruiz.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I have something that the city made me do something in my house to, don't do it. They gave me letters to correct that problem in my own premises. And now I, what's happened now, I complained to the city parks that there's a tragic thing of card players on East Side Park by Franklin Center, and they're just playing cards every day for the past, they're going on their third month, and they're gambling, and they're drinking, and they're doing, they're giving things under the table, and it sure isn't candy, okay? And I have photo, I have pictures of the beverages, what they do. They empty their beverages, and they put liquor in the bottles. There's a person that runs and goes gets liquor for them. And I talked to all the city park managers, and it doesn't seem to, nothing's getting done. And they've had policemen there, but the policemen don't do their job like they're supposed to, I'm not going to say who it is. And then the city parks cleaners, they clean the bathrooms, and they just, they just urine all over the place. As soon as they close it, they urine it right outside the bathrooms. And one day, one of the, one of the city parks workers, he had to shovel things out of the, out of the bathroom. He took about an hour to clean that bathroom. And I don't think that's right, because I see what, because I've been here all my life, 65 years, I've seen good to not very good anymore in Santa Barbara. And I see that the city protects the city, State Street really nice, they do as much as possible. I know there's a lot of homeless, but they maintain State Street really nice for all the tourists. But what happens to us that we live away from State Street, I don't think that's right, because I live in the area by the park, Mr. White. So I wish you could do something about it, because I have pictures of the beverages, what they have, what they've been drinking, and what they do.
Okay.
We have a casino.
All right, thank you very much. We will ask that along to the police department.
I'll keep--
Mr. Hotchkiss?
I'll keep coming.
The pictures you had, did you send us, send them to us?
No, I have them in my phone.
Can you send me some, get to the clerk, or--
Oh, I'll send you all of them. And the person that, that goes and runs or gets a beer, he's on a bicycle, so you'll know.
Send me what you got.
Okay.
Thank you.
If nothing gets done, I'll go to another person, because I don't like, because--
Great, thank you.
One more thing, and then I'll leave.
Something will get--
Something will get done.
I hope so, because I'll keep bugging you.
Great, that's--
Trust me.
Active citizenry, we appreciate it. Next speaker is Don Sharp.
Now a little change of pace. I'm Don Sharp, president of the Santa Barbara Conservancy, and with me today are three Conservancy members, Farmina Murray, Mike Mwali, and Steve Howes. In 1986, the City of Santa Barbara published a book called Santa Barbara El Pueblo Viejo, A Walking Guide to the Historic Districts of Santa Barbara. This book has been a guide and a textbook describing over 250 of our most cherished buildings throughout the El Pueblo Viejo district, constantly used by historians, city staff, professionals, and the, and the public. Thirty years later, primarily due to the efforts of Mary Lou Days and Dr. Dick Oglesby, the second edition of this book has been rewritten and produced and published by the Santa Barbara Conservancy. While the first book had only black and white photos and limited text, the second edition features all photographs in color, taken by local architect Dave Jones. This book is dedicated to Pearl Chase and Louise Boucher, both who worked tirelessly, as you know, to recognize, protect, and preserve the aesthetic character of our community. While the Conservancy produced the new edition, must, much credit belongs to Steve Howes, who designed the layout, maps, cover, and handled the complete production, management, and now distribution. The book is available at 1995 at all local books and gift and museum bookstores. The book was published with Conservancy and public donor funds, not the least of which was the City of Santa Barbara. We thank you for your contribution, and as a token of our appreciation, we present each of you with a copy of our book. Thank you.
Congratulations to, to your team, that's a--
And you were invited on the 30th of this month, I believe there's an invitation in your book, to a donor party giving credit to our community. Thank you.
That's wonderful, well done. The next speaker is Jose Arturo Gallegos.
Good afternoon, acting mayor, council. As you all remember, it was about maybe three years back or so, I, you know, came, spoke to you about the homeless, the homeless situation, and I myself was homeless. And during that time period, after I started getting my social security disability, I started going to my favorite little restaurants as a homeless individual. I was always welcome, and still, I had a nice little breakfast this morning, late morning, at La Arcada Bistro. I've been to Aldo's, Cadario, Pascucci's, I met Laura, Laura Knight, way before she started Pascucci's. I've been to Dargan's, Paul Dargan has known me for years. So as a homeless individual, I was always welcomed to these establishments, and even thanking Mr. Ralphs, Paradise Cafe. One time I had a meeting with Mr. Councilman Hotchkiss, and in his office, and we talked about my situation. And the one thing he repeated several times, "You don't look homeless, you don't look homeless, you don't look homeless," if you remember. And of course, my letters to the Santa Barbara Sentinel, I broke the mold of the stereotypical mentality of what homeless people are. I broke that. When I met Sharon Byrne, I became a volunteer for the MCA, Milpus Committee Association. As a homeless individual, now I reside at Victoria Hotel since last year April. I became an honorary member of the MCA. Last week Wednesday, as Councilmember Dominguez remember, I was, my second meeting with the Milpus Tax Force at the Franklin Center. And later on that day, the afternoon, I went to my first MCA board meeting. Before the meeting was adjourned, I was now, I was voted in as a board--
You need to wrap up.
Yeah, well, I thought I had four minutes.
I'm only seeing two here. Is Michael Miranda, is that, are you giving your time to, okay, sorry. I can see that on there.
So, so now I am, and now I'm an official board member. And as this gentleman just spoke about the park over there on North Soledad and Yanale, I am going to do whatever I can in my power to help not only the merchants in the Milpus area, but the residents as well. And Councilmember Hotchkiss, if you can get in touch with me sometime, I would like to see those photographs, if it's okay, at your convenience, if you do receive them. So, yes, I'm going to be very active with my community, you know, helping out. Number two, Willie Quinn, who is a half proprietor of La Arcada Bistro. A while back, I asked him, "How do you feel about having a St. Patrick's Day parade?" He goes, "I would love to see it." And not too long ago, I asked him the same question. "How would you like to have, if we have a St. Patrick's Day parade?" We've had fiesta since the 20s. I remember when salsas first started out, when I was in high school, just, you know, a couple of individuals. And now, I would be more than happy to, you know, help out with a St. Patty's parade, because we do have a lot of Irish immigrants here and American Irish. So I hope the council could, you know, come up, you know, with the premise and, you know, and so forth. So maybe, if not this year, maybe next year, or in 2018. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dominguez?
Just because this is another comment on the East Side Park, I want to just state for the benefit of the public, we've been doing a lot about the parks, and the Parks and Rec had a town hall revolving around Ortega Park, and a lot of what we discussed there, we're going to apply at all the parks citywide, including the East Side Park, and it's going to be on the Parks and Rec's Commission's agenda next month. So contact me, and I'll, I'll put you in touch with the Commission, so if you want to come make comment, or you want to hear what they're talking about, we can make sure we move this, this issue forward. Thank you.
Yes, because, excuse me, just one quick comment. I appreciate that, because when I was homeless, I used to spend a lot of time there, and I used to see a lot, a lot of crazy activity. I would just go over there, have a sandwich, drink a soda, you know, listen to my little radio. But yeah, I'm aware of the problems, you know, over there. But yes, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Natalie Diane, and there are four speakers ceding their time. Genie Carfall, is that right? I'm not seeing, I'm not reading that correctly. These are hard to read. Prem Pete--
Oh, Karen Scarfey.
Prem, are you there? Are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's one. Is it Aaron's Music Ant? Okay, that's two. How am I doing with G? I just cannot read that one. And Jessica Schlobom, okay, you're here. So that's four. And there is a mysterious one that I can't read. So we're going to give you 10 minutes, max.
Thank you. Mayors, councilmembers, thank you for this chance to speak. We're here in the wake of the election foremost to express our gratitude for you, for your hard work, for the elected officials, for the city staff, for the police departments. We're grateful for your work in creating a beautiful, safe home for us in Santa Barbara. We also have two requests today. We'd like to ask you to issue a statement that's similar to what was issued by the California Assembly and Senate, which I'll read in a moment. Just reassuring Santa Barbara residents that you're committed to upholding our values. And we'd also like you to step up action in Santa Barbara in any way possible, to be an inspiring example of a climate-safe, sustainable, and inclusive community in California in our nation. I'd like to read the joint statement by the California Assembly and Senate from, that was written the day after the election. "Today we woke up feeling like strangers in a foreign land, because yesterday Americans expressed their views on a pluralistic and democratic society that are clearly inconsistent with the values of the people of California. We have never been more proud to be Californians. By a margin in the millions, Californians overwhelmingly rejected politics fueled by resentment, bigotry, and misogyny. The largest state of the union and the strongest driver of our nation's economy has shown it has its surest conscience as well. California is, and must always be, a refuge of justice and opportunity for the people of all walks, talks, ages, and aspirations, regardless of how you look, where you live, what language you speak, or who you love. California has long set an example for other states to follow, and California will defend its people and our progress. We are not going to allow one election to reverse generations of progress at the height of our historic diversity, scientific advancement, economic output, and sense of global responsibility. We will be reaching out to federal, state, and local officials to evaluate how a Trump presidency will potentially impact federal funding of ongoing state programs, job-creating investments reliant on foreign trade, and federal enforcement of laws affecting the rights of people living in our state. We will maximize the time during this presidential transition to defend our accomplishments using every tool at our disposal. While Donald, Donald Trump may have won the presidency, he hasn't changed our values. America is greater than any one man or party. We will not be dragged back into the past. We will lead the resistance to any effort that would shred our social fabric or our constitution. California was not a part of this nation when its history began, but we are clearly now the keeper of its future. Our first request is that our city echo this powerful statement, that you echo this powerful statement, to reassure our residents in Santa Barbara that you're committed to sustainability, to inclusivity. We're grateful now, and always, that we have, we have a new police chief who's committed to community-based policing. That's really, really amazing for us. And we're heartened to hear that the police are planning to make a similar statement affirming their existing policy to maintain excellent relations with our law-abiding, undocumented neighbors. One of the most inspirational features of Hispanic culture is the strength of family bonds. And Hispanic, Hispanic families in Santa Barbara are now in a state of heightened fear that relatives may be deported. Undocumented immigrants create the backbone of our local economy. They work hard, they're law-abiding. We owe our undocumented neighbors a strong statement of solidarity at a time when our president-elect has promised to tear their families apart. Thank you."
Thank you. The next speaker is Art Ludwig, who has four speakers also ceding their time. Matt Turner, are you here? Anjali Ortell. Nancy Murdoch, I saw Nancy earlier. Nancy, there you are. And Margie Bushman. Okay, great. And then I see Sarah Newell as well, seems like additional one. All right, so you have your 10 minutes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, city councilmembers, I spoke with you last about sustainability performance metrics. I'd like to share a brief preview of possible Trump performance metrics. The morning after, when I Googled "Trump acceleration of climate change," the top result was the respected science journal Nature. They had already crafted a survey which popped up. It asked, "What do you think of the election? How will this affect your research? And how will this affect science generally?" This is what I wrote to them. "The election of Donald Trump may be the greatest single inflection point in the arc of human history. Trump has promised to take the wind out of the sails of climate science and global climate agreement, and to fast-track the development of tar sands and fracking. The math on the vast tar sands, the highest carbon oil source, indicates game over for clients, climate change. Human climate change-related deaths were zero 150 years ago. They are currently 400,000 annually and climbing. We are out of cushion. This is do-or-die time for Earth's climate. If Trump does what he says, Trump-driven climate change acceleration will geometrically increase human mortality for centuries. This will likely result in a number of human deaths somewhere between those caused by Pol Pot and those caused by Hitler. It's between 1.5 and 17 million. It will also change the pH and level of the ocean, result in thousands of additional species extinctions, and massively increase disruption to all human enterprise. Trump will control the world's greatest military, the FBI, in an unprecedented depth and breadth of surveillance data on every would-be activist. As I was still processing the climate implications, I heard a Russian journalist counseling Americans on recognizing the stages of totalitarianism. This coming federal, the coming federal changes will not be an easy fight. However, in Santa Barbara County, Trump was defeated by a two-to-one margin. With all the advantages we enjoy in Santa Barbara, we are perfectly positioned to take the most effective direct action of all, to create an obviously superior alternative. Our second request is that the city act to make Santa Barbara an example of how the world can be climate-safe, sustainable, and inclusive. A good first step would be for the council to convene calendared meetings of the city's Sustainability Committee, ideally outside of working hours when more people can participate. Since the election, when my liberal coastal elite bubble burst, I've been listening to Trump supporters with an open mind. They didn't vote for Trump so much as for drastic shift in direction. I was shocked to find that most of what they thought they were voting for, I actually agreed with. Santa Barbara famously started the modern environmental movement after the 1969 oil spill. Now it is time to retake the lead. Lancaster, California, in the meth belt of the inland empire, under a Republican mayor, has become the solar capital of California. They are on track to become the first carbon-neutral city in the United States. Quoting the mayor, "I may be a Republican, but I am not an idiot. Climate change is real, and we have to deal with it." Greenfield, Kansas, assessed their prospects after years of depopulation and a devastating tornado. They decided to rebuild as the green building capital of the United States, a goal they have achieved. In Los Angeles, the Departments of Flood Control, Water Resources, and Sanitation are working collaboratively on stormwater infiltration projects that aim to replace the majority of environmentally costly state water with local supply. If there's something more humiliating than Los Angeles kicking our butts on sustainable water management, I cannot think of what it is. The city put a ton of work into a sensible climate action plan, general plan, bicycle master plan, food action plan, et cetera. These are all excellent policies. However, the translation of these policies into action is lagging. The new zoning ordinance, for example, is still diametrically opposed to the realization of the sustainability and affordability goals of the general plan. When we have a groundwater sustainability plan, the INZO will be in opposition to that as well. We suddenly have no more time to dither. We owe the youth decisive action to order, in order to hand the city over in good condition. What were our 2050 goals should now be our 2025 goals. People voted for a change in direction. It is time for us to get off our environmental laurels and lead the world to show what is possible. Santa Barbara can and should light an inspiring, replicable path through the dangers the world is facing. We realize you are already understaffed and overworked. We stand ready to put public wind in your government sails towards this good place and to help in any other way we can. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Next speaker is Andrea Rosalinski.
I made this little sign, but it's okay. I didn't go to the rally Saturday, so I'm sporting. I just want to say, I was at the first Earth Day, and I hardly remember where it was. I know Jackson Brown was there. And I just want, like, yeah, in LA, the developers are working with sustainability people to improve the Miracle Mile District, and you know how like a lot of people go out to a movie or to a museum and then go, they're trying to make paths, pathways, so people walk less. And we could be doing that, too. I mean, pathways, people walk more and park their cars. And what else was I going to say? Yeah, I just think we need to be an example, and there's a lot we can do. You know, like plant, like where a lot of the fountains were, we need to get out and plant milkweed, because, you know, the butterflies are dying. There's a lot of projects we could do. And I hope you're mayor next time, it's kind of jumping toward. But, yeah, I wasn't sure if I was going to speak. I thought I was giving my time to someone else, but I love this city, and just, yeah, like, I'm trying to organize something, too, for the National Water Day or International Water Day in March, so maybe I'm going to work with the surf rider people. I found them, they found me on Facebook, and just get a real bipartisan thing to work on water quality issues, you know, in Santa Barbara, carpentry, maybe even, you know, around the world, so it's more even, where everyone has clean water. And thank you for your time. I guess I only have seven seconds, so I can do my poem real quick. Oh, yeah. This is a poem I wrote one time when it was Earth Day. "Where is all the love radiating from the sweet doves, lost in the air pollution? Help, where's the solution? Many fish have disappeared from the creeks. When will we listen to nature and wildlife speak?"
Thank you. Next speaker is Kara Kerik. Next one is Wesley Rock.
Roke. Thank you, Mayor Protem White and City Council. I appreciate all the work you do. I'm here to kind of, to talk about sustainability in Santa Barbara. I'm with a nonprofit, Santa Barbara Permaculture Network. We've been here in the city almost 20 years, wow. And we have done, we've been the forerunner of many of the policies that you move forward. We help educate the population to allow them to kind of understand it and be able to be good citizens. So with this idea of this education, this year, we started a whole, at the beginning of the year, we were, had a proclamation from the city for our work with bringing and explaining COP21 to the citizens. So we really appreciated that honor, and we have a program called Civics 101 for-- And we have a program called Civics 101 for Climate Change that we're doing further on. One thing I would like to see in the future is, I go to the, the city report at the Chamber of Commerce each year, and this year, it's great. I mean, it's all about what makes the city run, but there was just one slide there about what we're doing as far as the impact of climate. And then this was what the mayor signed, the compact of mayors, back in January 5th. And I would like to see, there's, there's a thing in here that goes through everything but says "report." I would like to see the report back to the, to the citizens, but greatly if it's part of the city's report. That would be incredible. And then to remind us that we've been empowered by the preamble of the adoption of the Paris Agreement. And it goes like this. "Agreement to uphold and promote regional and international cooperation in order to mobilize a stronger and a more ambitious climate action by all parties and non-party stakeholders, including civil society, private sector, financial institutions, cities, and other sub-national authorities, local communities, and indigenous peoples." So we have been given by the U.N., or because we signed it, we've been given kind of marching orders that we as cities are also responsible for this. And I'd like to see Santa Barbara be a leader in this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kenneth Locke, followed by Damian Gallagher.
I gave my time.
Okay. All right, then the last, this is the last public speaker.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I've been on Twitter, I've been mentioning the fact that who I am is a fitness expert. So I've been hashtagging "fitness expert." The first one, when it comes to tennis, and it, the awkward job I have is I have to explain to tennis players that they haven't become fit. And basically, I mean, it's kind of like a no-brainer. I think I've talked to you guys about this before. It's just the development of one arm. I mean, that's a, it's a complete lack of fitness. And I think that it needs to be addressed if this, I'm kind of doing, working, let's see, the whole connection between, like, globally and locally. So I'm just here locally trying to inspire the community. I think it's really important for, for the kids. The idea is that when it comes to fitness, I can explain it in relation to being mentally fit, is in relation to physical fitness, and how the two are one. And it's really important that a system of education or a school has a reference to somebody who is fit, so the kids can actually use them as kind of a role model. And I'm sorry to say that there isn't one in this, this community. And I'll probably go before the Parks and Rec and kind of ask them if they have somebody that they use as their fitness, you know, expert, you know, who's providing, you know, the community with, say, direction or standard foundation for the community. And if not, just kind of educate them the fact that I, I can provide that service. And just thought I'd share that with you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, may I?
Ms. Maria.
Thank you. To respond to some of the public comment, yesterday, our youth council held a meeting to meet the new police chief. And one of the questions that she was asked was about our police department, and would they act on federal orders to deport undocumented people living in, in Santa Barbara? And you can read her response in, in the News-Hawk article. And I can tell you that, that our policy is to, for the police department to enforce the law without asking people about their immigration status. So I was grateful to hear that, that response. And I would encourage people to, to be in touch with the chief with your, with your thoughts on, on how we will handle that going forward. Some people talked about what's happening in our school districts and the undocumented students or the students who have parents who are undocumented. I've set up a meeting with Kate Parker, a school board member, for Friday afternoon. And we're going to talk to some students as well. If anyone has an interest in being at that meeting, our secretary is through those doors. Let me know and leave your contact information there. And then a question, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I may, to Mr. Casey, on our climate change action plan. If I'm remembering correctly, we heard a report about sea level rise not too long ago. When would the entire climate change action plan come back to the city council? We, we do an adaptive management process, and I guess I'm, I'm asking you when, for the people concerned about our policies related to carbon emissions and what the city is doing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, without going into too much detail, because it's not on our agenda to really have a dialogue about this, we do have an adopted climate action plan. It has implementation measures that we continue to work on. We're doing a local coastal update that's looking at sea level rise very carefully. We've just recently given you an update on that. And I think the Sustainability Committee, we're going to be engaging more on kind of what's the, what's the next implementation of our city's sustainability efforts. So I think that you'll see some items coming forward in that regard as well. We don't have a specific date in mind for giving you a status on the climate action plan. If you'd like us to do that, we, we touch on it briefly at the Joint Planning Commission Council Work Sessions every six months, because it's part of that long laundry list of items that the planning staff are working on. If you'd like something more specific, we could do that if there's an interest in the council.
Thank you. I encourage people to follow up with me on that as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Maria. Mr. Dominguez.
I want to say that I'm really glad that the speakers came today and talked at this, at this moment in our history. A lot of the policy stuff we deal with gets my mind really active, and I'm trying to juggle and balance a lot of factors. But hearing people speak today, it was just, my heart was in my throat and really just touching to hear people's comments. And it's also great to see so many millennials here and younger folks. And everyone up here is committed to protecting the Constitution. We all swore that oath, and we're all 100% committed. We each have maybe different priorities, which amendments we're really pushing for. I taught Fourth Amendment law and worked in the Fourth and Fifth Amendment. So those are things that I'm specialized at and I love to talk about. But everyone up here is committed to, to protecting not only the Bill of Rights, but the environment. Everyone lives here because we love California's coast. And again, we have different priorities, and what shapes our priorities is, is all of you. When you come in and talk to us, when you call in, when you send emails, it helps us redirect our focus and prioritizing. So, so keep up the great work, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. And well said, yes. Thank you for, for coming out today and, and speaking your mind. Okay, we move on then to the consent agenda, and we have some items to read into the record. Madam Clerk.
Item number three, adoption of oversized vehicle parking ordinance, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by adding Section 10.44.220 with respect to oversized vehicle parking, amending Section 10.44.200 to eliminate the term temporary recreational vehicle, and repealing Section 10.44.205 pertaining to recreational vehicle parking. Item number four, adoption of ordinance for updates to water metering requirements and clarifying requirements for individual metering, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Santa Barbara Municipal Code Chapters 14.04 and 14.08, updating and clarifying water meeting, metering requirements, adding existing water meeting, requiring requirements previously located in Chapter 22.04. Item number five, adoption of ordinance for on-bill financing agreement with Southern California Edison for outdoor lighting at Cater Water Treatment Plant, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the Public Works Director to execute an on-bill financing agreement with Southern California Edison for outdoor lighting at the Cater Water Treatment Plant for a term not to exceed 10 years. Item number six, amendment to the rules and regulations for the protection and enhancement of solar access, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 98-027 pertaining to the rules and regulations for the protection and enhancement of solar access in the City of Santa Barbara. Item number seven, acceptance of water meter agreement and easement for 3885 State Street, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. A resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving an agreement for access to water meters and sub-meters and accepting a grant of easement for 3885 State Street.
Thank you. So we have a number of speakers for item number three. Are there any items that the council would like to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a statement about item three, whenever you think that's appropriate.
Well, would you, do you want to pull that, shall we pull that off and just have that a, a separate item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any other items that the council would like to have pulled? Okay. Well, then, let's go to item three. Maybe just quickly read that title again, Ms. Applegate, just for...
Adoption of oversized vehicle parking ordinance.
Okay. Shall we have the public speakers first, and then you can speak?
Thank you.
Okay. So the first speaker is Peter Maron, followed by Catherine Maron.
I hope what follows is not too complicated. It's a little complicated for me. The point is, you're going to pass this. And at the same time, this is going on, as you may know or may not know, up in Northern California. The CCC has asked the county of Santa Cruz to cease enforcing its ordinance that prevents or forbids RV parking in the county under certain circumstances, which is, in certain ways, much like the ordinance you're about to pass. Also, Carol Sobel has told me, as you know, an ordinance against RVs was passed in Los Angeles, and she is preparing a suit against that ordinance as we speak. So with that, as a preface, let me say this. Mr. Cologne, when he was reading this ordinance to you the first time, explained there were a couple of hazy areas. And of course, you thought it's strong enough to proceed. However, those hazy areas create a lot of legal questions. I will list just a couple of them for you. One has to do with the override of DMV definitions of what an oversized vehicle is. That really is questionable, since DMV considers these vehicles to be drivable and parkable on ordinary streets. Secondly, it overrides the DMV regulations as to handicap, because you are claiming that you are only going to exempt those vehicles that require modification, presumably for people in wheelchairs. But that overrides a lot of DMV practices. Beyond that, it also overrides what seemed to us to be a lot of ADA and UNRA regulations in the state of California, which define the way the handicapped should be treated. And you're definitely, what you are doing essentially is saying, we can define who is handicapped and who is not when it comes to these oversized vehicles, which may not in fact be oversized at all. So you're combining two questionable acts, which is redefine oversized and also redefine what handicapped is. Now, I'm not saying we would win in court on those issues. The real issue here is whether or not there are strong enough questions where, when we go for an injunctive or a temporarily relief, temporary restraining order, we will get one. And when it comes to that, you have to confer with your city attorney. But I believe the grounds are strong enough to get that. Back in 2005, when the city tried to ban RVs, we got exactly that, and the law was suspended for two years while it worked its way through the courts, and the city eventually lost. What it lost on at that time was the signage issue. We had experts come in, and the city had come, experts come in and argue about what sufficient signage was. The city at that time wanted to put signs at the entrances to the city. What the court ruled was indeed the city had to put a sign on every single street. Now, the new ordinance says, well, we're going to put signs up on certain streets and then at, quote, "the entrance to neighborhoods." Not clear what that means. But that also raises a certain question, which will have to be settled in the courts. Is that sufficient or not? All I can tell you is that when we bring this in state court, it's going to end up in the very same appeal court that ruled against the city 10 years ago. And indeed, two of the judges on that court are two of the judges who ruled against the city in 2005. Beyond that, there are questions relating to the Coastal Commission, and there are questions relating, finally, to a clause in the ADA laws about neutral policy. And what that essentially says is, you can adopt a policy which is neutral on its face, but if it has a disparate effect on the handicapped...
You don't need to wrap up here. You've had four minutes.
Okay. I had two more minutes somewhere.
And who is that?
Douglas.
Douglas, okay.
Okay. So if this has a disparate effect on the disabled or the handicapped, it may not be legal. Beyond that, there's one more thing. In your new law, you say that visitors to the city can apply for two five-day permits in any 90 days to park on city streets. If, as the city attorney has said, the issue is safety, how can those vehicles park on the streets? Are they safe because they're here only for five days? Are they safe because you've permitted them? But if you say they are safe, then the basis on which you are saying these other vehicles are unsafe becomes an open question. My only point to you today is, as a taxpayer, I think it would be sensible not to start putting up your signs, at least until we have introduced our temporary restraining order to the courts, and you have some idea about whether it's sensible to go on or whether in fact this is going to be tied up for two years while you've spent $75,000 on signs, which will not be able to go up because this will be in the courts. So I submit all that for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maron. Mr. Dominguez?
Mr. Maron?
I have a question for you.
So do you have an alternative to, to this program? Because what we created a committee for in the past weeks is to help people living in their RVs find permanent housing. So I'm not sure why you're fighting this program, which is a safety program, because of the accidents we've had with people hitting RVs or not having the clearance. And you saw the presentation. So is there an alternative that you want us to consider?
Well, let me say to that, that if that is a problem, then you can't have visitors park on the same streets where it becomes a hazard. But a stat...
We're not letting visitors park on the streets.
Aha. But the permit, as, as I read the ordinance, they can.
Well, this will be a topic of conversation for the committee.
All right.
But you don't have an alternative you want us to consider?
Yes, I think many solutions are possible. And my one suggestion at the beginning was that we should have looked for those solutions before you drive many people out of town, which will happen when you pass this ban. Your purpose is to control RVs, and I get that. Our purpose is to see that no one is driven out of town, right, before a solution is found. I think a registration for RVs and the application of certain laws to where they can park and the assignment of certain areas where people can park makes a whole lot of sense. I think three days for parking is too much. I think people should be restricted in where they park to a night. And if anyone asks them to move, they should have to move. And if they don't move, they lose their permit or their place in line for registration. I have suggested before, we do extensive outreach to the RVers are scared, because some of them will now accept housing, who wouldn't do that before. I suggest that we use the police to do that outreach, that we get the housing people involved to do that outreach. And I must tell you that most people presently in RVs have never had any contact with social agencies whatsoever, for one reason or another, right? And if we begin a concerted program to do that, I think this problem can be solved. My only point to you is, I'm obliged to fight this until I'm sure that no people are going to be unnecessarily driven out of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Klon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I want, I want to be clear here, because there, there are certain things that Mr. Maron said that are, are not correct. First, as to the visitor permits and safety, the only class of permit that is not temporary is the disability permit. So the ordinance tries to achieve safety by limiting the time that people can park in certain areas. As to those visitor permits, a specific requirement in the ordinance is that the location be determined by the traffic engineer not to create or exacerbate a dangerous traffic condition. So if a visitor wants to park on, you know, dead man's curve, that's not going to happen. So there's a safety review process. Second, with respect to the ADA, the ordinance committee and your staff took a lot of pain to make sure that this ordinance has... to make sure that this ordinance has an accommodation and reasonable modification process. This ordinance is actually the first time the city of Santa Barbara has legislated a disability accommodation process. So, rather than interfering with the rights of the disabled, I believe this ordinance implements those rights as described in the ADA. As to the vehicle code, the definition of oversized vehicle is not mandated by the state. There are limits, certainly, on what kinds of oversized vehicles can be driven upon the streets. But when it comes to parking, that's a city issue. Having said all that, I think it's incumbent on all of us to have a degree of humility here, in the sense that we are venturing into new territory. But the reality here is that the council has, in my legal judgment, taken all the steps necessary to try and recognize the rights of the people with these kinds of vehicles who would be affected.
Thank you. Okay. And we, again, we will be having the committee meetings, and I hope and expect that Mr. Maron will participate in that as well. Okay. Moving along then to the next speaker is Jose Arturo Gallegos again.
Before I moved to Phoenix, Arizona, in June of 2003, I do remember when I was staying at Casa Esperanza during that time period at Res Commission. I do recall that there was a huge RV problem. And one of the biggest problems was because of heavy drug use, alcohol use, prostitution, and it was just disrupting, you know, many of the business owners in that area and the residents. And I understood that. So, when I moved to Phoenix, Arizona, and I remember I was watching local news in Phoenix, CBS affiliate, and they covered this story, like, whoa! And I was watching this, that there was going to be a ban on RV vehicles. Well, I don't know exactly what happened at that time period. And yes, it is a very, very difficult and touchy situation, and I understand it, because it could hurt those families, people who can't afford housing, maybe they have low-paying jobs. I understand that. But on the flip side of that is drug use, alcohol use, disturbing, you know, the residencies where the business owners trash. I get that, all that. So, what do you do? What is the answer? I wish I could come up with that answer. I really do. It's, like I said, it's a very difficult situation. I, for one, would like to see more outreach for those who are, you know, have, you know, like this gentleman just spoke about, you know, disabilities, ADA and so forth, for these individuals, these folks, families, you know, to get into housing, to have some kind of outreach, some kind of social, you know, have social workers to help them out to get them off the streets. Thank you for your time on this.
Thank you. Next speaker is Richard Paluch.
I'm one of the people that's involved with the Safe Parking Program, and it's basically been a lifesaver for me. One of the things that everyone is responsible for, and everyone has the same amount of, it's no different, there's no more, you don't have any more of it than I do, I don't have any less of it than you do, and that's freedom, the ability to express it, to experience it, to go for it. Stepping on someone's freedom is what you're supposed to protect us from, not just an opinion that this might be dangerous. I mean, RVs were around before the bicycle lanes were put in. You guys had no problem with saying, "It's safe enough for bicycles to put a lane in." You basically allowed that to be. And now you want to come back and blame, "RVs are dangerous to bicycles." You want to blame, "RVs are upsetting the community in some way." There's only about 40 of us around. You've got UPS trucks. You've got bicyclers going down the road in dozens, in fifties and hundreds. I think it's dangerous for bicycles to be on the road, because they might get hit, because they're going out in traffic left and right. You have accident reports about that. If you want to talk about safety, then maybe we should not have bicycles pedaling down the street. RVs are no more dangerous. They're an act of freedom that was, well, they sold them for I don't know how many years, and nobody had a problem with them then. Now, all of a sudden, because some people that don't have as much wealth as other people have to turn to them as a source of refuge, it's a crime, and they can't be allowed to be around, because it offends someone's aesthetic idea of what freedom is supposed to look like? No. Freedom says, "I get to do this. Don't step on it. I'm not stepping on you."
Thank you.
And...
Okay. Thank you.
By the way...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Handicapped, there's already a size established for the handicapped vehicles.
Thank you.
It's already in the book. You can add to it, but you can't take away from it. And all your parking spaces...
Thank you.
...already have established size limits. You can't make them up as you go.
The last speaker is Phil Parson. Oh, Mr. Dominguez? Can you wait till we finish the other speakers?
This is relating to his comment.
Yes, sir.
If I'm not mistaken, your RV, I was walking down Milpiss in the middle of my district last week, your RV was hit by a car.
No, it wasn't.
Right in front of Rusty's Pizza.
No, it wasn't me.
Do you park on Milpiss?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But, the thing is, is how many bicycles...
And that car driver came out, he parked right in front of Pat's Liquor. He came out and gave the owner of that RV $20 to make up for the damage to the RV. But that's right between Haley and Ortega, right in front of Rusty's and Pat's Liquor, where the road narrows, and there's a person parking their RV there.
They shouldn't be, because, just because they're stupid, just because the guy on the beach can't handle a fire, you took away my ability to enjoy a fire at nighttime.
But I just want to point out, this is a safety issue for everyone, RV owners and...
But you're taking freedoms away left and right in the name of safety.
I know, but we have a committee to balance these freedoms. I just want to make sure that that's clear.
No. Well, it wasn't I. I, you know, I don't have any of those kind of things. And before you start fooling with people's freedoms, protect them first.
Thank you. All right. Back to Phil Parson.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem and council, for the opportunity to do this. First off, I want to second Peter Maron's comments. I agree wholeheartedly with his statement. I'm generally opposed to the oversized vehicle ordinance. I've stated that in the past. I find it discriminating against motorhome dwellers who usually have no other recourse or housing options. And I'm particularly confused and disturbed by the provisions in the ordinance relating to handicap placards and plates, as far as permits for a certain place, that sort of thing. It's very nebulous to me. All of that being said, I appreciate the council's very fast implementation of the ad hoc committee. And as an invitee to that committee, I welcome the opportunity to work with the committee to find fair and equitable solutions. I know they exist and are just waiting to be discovered. So, again, I commend the council at least doing that right away. I didn't really expect it until maybe, who knows, six months from now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now, back to the council, so this item is now back to the council. Ms. Murillo?
Thank you. So, to follow on what Phil had to say, the ad hoc committee will meet Wednesday, November 30th, 2:00 p.m. in Room 15, which is the room through those doors back there. So, I'm glad you're going to come, and I'll be there. And Councilmember Hotchkiss and I have been appointed from the City Council to participate. We'll be working with the Safe Parking Program. I'm hoping we'll find daytime parking for people who have business in the city, they live in their cars and their RVs, obviously. They need accommodation for when they drop their children off at school or shop or come into the city for medical appointments or other activities. And I talked to Susan Rose today, a former county supervisor, who was there when Safe Parking was developed so many years ago. And she just wanted me to put in a good word with you all how well it's working and how much support there is in the community for it. And I will reluctantly vote for this ordinance, even as I know some of the people who live in their vehicles, and I appreciate who you are, and I know you're not drug dealers and prostitutes and bad people. You're good people. Most of you have income, and you work. Some of you have children. You're an artist. I just want you to know, I'm going to do what I can for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, well, I'm hearing then that there may not be, need to be a separate vote, and so do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
We do.
In its entirety. All right. A motion by Hotchkiss, second by Rouse. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, that's so ordered. Then, moving along to our next item. Madam Clerk, do you want to read that?
Update of Southern California Edison Resiliency Plan and the Santa Barbara Downtown Reliability Project.
You.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem White, members of the council. My name is Rondi Guthrie, and I'm the Government Affairs Representative for Southern California Edison. Have a team from Southern California Edison here today to talk mostly about our downtown Santa Barbara reliability project and provide an update for you on that project. But also, wanted to let you know about some of the larger regional projects we're working on, such as the Santa Barbara-Golita Resiliency Plan, which takes a look at the generation need in this area with a focus on distributed energy resources and grid modernization. Our Santa Barbara County Reliability Project, which is the upgrade of our 66 KV subtransmission line, and then the downtown Santa Barbara Reliability Project, which is a massive upgrade to the distribution system here in the downtown area. We have worked closely with city and county leaders over the last several years to bring these projects to fruition, and will continue to partner with the city, the business and environmental community, and all interested parties to discuss project impacts and opportunities. Both our former president, Pedro Pizarro, and new president, R.O. Nichols, have come up to Santa Barbara within the last year to talk about these plans to enhance reliability in the area and SCE's vision for the grid of the future. And just in the last few weeks, we co-hosted a meeting with the Community Environmental Council on the Resiliency Plan and met with the Downtown Santa Barbara Organization Board of Directors to provide them an update on the downtown Santa Barbara reliability plan. I also wanted to let you know, specific to the downtown Santa Barbara reliability project, which is a unique construction project for the downtown area, we have been working very closely with city staff on understanding the permit process for this type of project. I will now turn the presentation over to Kathy Hart, who is an account director in our local Public Affairs Department, who will give you a big-picture overview of all of the projects we are working on in the Santa Barbara area. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Kathy Hart. As Rondi said, I'm going to kick off this presentation with just an overview of some of our overarching projects. Our team will talk more in depth about the downtown reliability project. But I use this slide, and I show this to you. It helps me keep the visual of what we're doing in Santa Barbara. I use this, actually, with our internal executives and leaders to talk about the Santa Barbara projects, and it makes sense to me, so hopefully it'll make sense to you. But in our concentric circles, the overarching plan is the Santa Barbara County Resiliency Plan. As Rondi mentioned, we met last week in a meeting co-hosted by the Community Environmental Council to talk about the need, the analysis that we've done here in Santa Barbara as to what the electrical needs are, especially in relation to the transmission vulnerabilities. And we've talked here about that many times before. We've determined that there's about 105 megawatts of gap between what the peak load is for this area on a hot summer day, or maybe it's even a winter day. This tends to be a winter-peaking load here in Santa Barbara, and what is required, or what we could serve on our 66 KV system in the event that we lost transmission capability on our 230 KV lines that run into the city. 105 megawatts is the target for our resiliency plan. We talked very in-depth and had a very robust discussion with a group of stakeholders that included a couple of council members here today, and as well as some of our environmental folks from the community and some business leaders, to talk about how can we bring more distributed energy resources or renewables to fill that gap. We are looking to go out at first of the year with a request for proposals to actually solicit some of that, some new proposals for renewable projects or distributed energy projects here in this area to help fill that 105-megawatt gap. We want to spread the word, and we want everybody to spread the word. We hope to have a very robust response to that RFP. And we're willing to look at anything and everything that comes into the mix. And it could be solar, it could be battery storage, it could be other types of technologies. We're not limiting ourselves to just one particular technology, but we know that it's going to be a portfolio of things that's going to help us meet that need. In addition, we shared with the group that we still believe, for purposes of what we call short-circuit duty, that, and I'll explain that in a minute, that some gas-fired generation may be part of that portfolio. As you know, we have a peaker plant up in Golita. We are currently, before the PUC right now, in a proceeding to ask for an extension of that contract and a refurbishment of that plant for 10 years. And short-circuit duty is, in very basic terms, if a line falls to ground, if there's enough amperage on the line, that line will hit the ground, and it will de-energize. It will trip the circuits. If there's not enough amperage in the system, that line stays hot, and then it becomes a safety issue for the public, for first responders, even in high-fire areas, it could be a challenge. So, we believe that Elwood provides us that short-circuit duty protection on the system in its current status. There are other technologies that can provide that duty, but those technologies today are somewhat expensive, perhaps even not quite fully tested. And so, again, we're open, open to see what comes into the RFP. But in the meantime, we're going to continue pursuing the Elwood contract. So, again, a very robust discussion. We appreciated the input from our city leaders here, from community leaders. I think that there will be continued opportunities for discussion. We'll be sharing more information with you when that request for proposals is released, probably after the first of the year. And we are very encouraged here in Santa Barbara that we can begin to move into this clean energy technology. This is something that we've talked about in a white paper that we've recently released, and we shared with some of our leaders here. I hope all of you will have a chance to read it. It's a new direction for our company, and Santa Barbara, for us, is one of our testbeds, if you will. This is where we really want to bring more new technologies, more plug-and-play technologies to solve this particular need and future needs. So, the inner circle is just related to our Santa Barbara County Reliability Project. That's our 66 KV transmission line project that's been in play for a number of years. We did receive a license to construct, and right now, we are putting together a bid package for a contractor to do that work for us. We are also in the process of procuring the necessary permits to do that work, one of which is a coastal development permit with the county of Santa Barbara. We hope to have those permits in hand after the first of the year and probably start construction towards the end of the first quarter. So, again, we'll keep you updated as we get closer to actual start dates. So, I'll turn it over to the rest of my team. I have Alicia Piato here. She's our district manager here in Santa Barbara. You've met her before, and she's going to talk a little bit about the downtown project that we're here to discuss in detail. Thanks.
Thank you. Wait a second. There's a question from Mr. Hotchkiss.
Yes, please. You mentioned 105-megawatt gap?
Yes.
Give me some reference as to what that really means. What megawatts do we use typically?
So, peak load in the Santa Barbara area is typically about 265 megawatts. That's the overall highest number of megawatts that happens here, and that's considering some projected load as well. So, in the event that we would lose those 230 KV lines that run up in the hills above the city, we would switch over to the 66 KV system to serve load. So, initially, if those lines, if both lines were lost, and that would be something catastrophic, that's not something we expect, you know, to happen in the near term, but it's something that can happen. It's a vulnerability. So, in the event that those lines were lost, transmission then would be shifted to the 66 KV system. So, we're 105 megawatts short of that 265 to serve the entire load on the 66 KV system. So, we're 105-megawatts short of that 265 to serve the entire load on the 66 KV system today. By closing that 105-megawatt gap with other resources like distributed energy resources, like battery storage, we can then serve the entire load without using those 230 KV lines.
I'm not sure I followed your numbers. Yet, in the hills, how much, two what?
265.
265. And if you lost that, you'd have what, down here, 60-something?
So, it should be 265 minus 105, so my math is 150 megawatts.
160.
160 megawatts, yeah.
So, that's the gap we're looking at?
No, we're looking at 105. We can serve 160 megawatts, so we can bring up the power and serve 160 megawatts of load. So, initially, we would look at serving, so restoring power to critical resources like hospitals, fire stations, wastewater treatment plants, those things, we have those identified, but we would be short 105 megawatts.
So, the most likely catastrophe would be fire that would affect this, correct?
Fire could affect that. Typically, though, in those areas, a fire can trip the line. A fire is not likely to bring down the line, so...
Smoke can have a huge effect, too, correct?
Smoke can have an effect on the line, trip the line.
That would be disastrous for us if, in the middle of the fire, we lost power. So, are we sure that we will not lose power in the middle of a fire?
We are not sure. That is a vulnerability today.
And is that what we're talking about today, to make sure that we're sure in the future?
That's what we are trying quickly to close that gap. Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's address that. I'll ask you back that, after the rest of your presentation. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Alicia Piato. I'm the District Manager here in the Santa Barbara Edison office, and in keeping the theme that Kathy's been talking about, I'm gonna focus us a little bit on the small circle, so the small distribution side of the house. Just to give you a little bit of background information, the city of Santa Barbara is served by a multitude of circuits. While we have been focusing on the circuits that serve the downtown area, we continue to keep a robust maintenance plan on all of the circuits that serve the Santa Barbara district, as well as everybody here in the city. So, the plan we're gonna talk to you about today is specific to the downtown area, but I don't want to lose focus, that we're always looking at our reliability metrics for all of the circuits in the Santa Barbara area. Okay? Okay, so, you know, for the past few years, we have been focused on doing the projects that we could do, interim-type projects. This year alone, we focused on all of these projects that we shared with you earlier in the year. These are completed projects now, in addition to the ones we did the prior year where we even worked on our substations, so that was about $11 million that we spent that year. I don't have the figures for this year, because these projects are not tallied up yet, but we have been working on those as well. You probably have seen us in the downtown area. We've been doing all of the potholing and all of the inventory and all of our vaults, so we've been already working down here. I'm gonna turn over, really, the meat of the presentation to our project manager. It's Carolina Gonzalez, and she's gonna talk to you specifically about the downtown project, where we are, and, you know, what type of support we need from you, and what that might look like moving forward, because we're getting very close to have shovels in the ground here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. I'm delighted to present to you updates to our downtown reliability project. Go ahead and go next. Okay, so, as your electric utility, we want you to always have power when you need it, and we are constantly tracking and monitoring electric outages. We use two different metrics called SAFI and SADI. SAFI is our System Average Interruption Frequency Index, and that's the number of times that a customer has interrupted with a sustained outage per year, and SADI is the cumulative amount of time that the average customer has interrupted with a sustained outage. So, beginning in 2014, 2015, we began to see these numbers drop, and unfortunately, our downtown organization was impacted the most when they experienced outages, unplanned outages, that lasted anywhere between 12 and 22 hours. So, for the past year, our Design Department, our Engineering Department, our Civil Department have been putting, working diligently to put an amazing improvement plan together. There we go. Can you hear me now a little better? Okay. So, we'll go ahead and get into that. So, this is a map of downtown Santa Barbara. There are eight different circuits that serve three different substations. The major circuits we're gonna be focusing are the Milpas, Turnpike, Padre, Ana Capa, and Figueroa, as well as the others. So, long-term reliability improvement consists of installing new electrical equipment, replacing aged equipment, installing new cable, four remote control switch motors, and 30 underground switches, as well as 15,000 feet of trench and conduit. So, the overall scope aims to reduce dual-voltage system and associated equipment, thus reducing failure points, and install new underground conduit and cable to create additional circuit ties to improve switching capabilities. Some of the major benefits is to improve reliability and operability. Increased automation will improve system restoration times. So, some of the challenges that we foresee coming with the project is civil construction in the downtown area. We're gonna be doing a lot of underground work in the area, and, of course, we're gonna see some traffic impacts, and we're gonna need to have required maintenance outages as well. Yes, sir?
Mingus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, these benefits, if I understand these correctly, is one of these related to the new trend of alternative energy sources and having solar and other generation mechanisms to have a two-way network?
Yeah, so, one of the things... Hi, my name's Ryan Sisk. I'm an engineer for Edison. So, when we do do the reconductor, we are actually installing a larger conductor than what might be necessary to serve the load, but that'll allow what will hopefully be more of a plug-and-play system for that generation that you mentioned. So, it should help, when we get an interconnection application, that the actual generator can be interconnected without having to do any other upgrades on our system. So, we are looking ahead for that.
So, which, if you go back to the last slide, just so I can make my note in the right place, is it one of these benefits I should...
Replacing both mainline and radial cable for the circuits in the downtown area. So, if we have a customer that wants to connect on what would currently be a radial circuit or radial path, it'll already be reconducted to a larger size than what is there presently, so we'll be ready.
Great, thank you.
So, just an overview of our project updates. So, to date, we have completed 129 vault inventories, so now we have a full inventory of what's in downtown. We've completed our potholing, which allowed us to excavate and to determine the exact locations of our SE facilities. So, as a result, our Technical Design Department have been able to create 12 work order designs that encompass the entire civil and electrical scope of the work. The final construction phasing is still yet to be determined. So, what the design consists at a high level is two parts. We are going to be cutting over circuits, and we're gonna be doing what we call worst-circuit rehabilitation, which we call a WCR project. So, the next steps and timelines, what we're working on this week is processing the easement request to the city for our above-ground equipment. We tentatively plan to meet with ABR and city staff on November 21st, and we tentatively plan to present to the next HLC meeting with city staff on November 30th, and in December, we plan to meet with city to begin our permitting process request for that. And in January 2017, we're gonna begin our community outreach. Our anticipated construction start date is March 1st of 2017. So, the scope of work is gonna consist about 14 months' worth of construction, and in a perfect world, if, you know, we didn't have weather constraints, we would be able to complete that in 14 months. But, you know, we do have weather constraints. There will be moratoriums and holidays and things of that nature to consider. So, we're hoping that with your support and city staff support, we'll be able to work as much as possible so that we don't prolong the project and impact the businesses in downtown. So, what we have here is our proposed civil and electric phasing. Can't really see too much of the street names, but at least you can kind of see what our proposed phasing is, what it's gonna look like, and more in detail what our proposed Phase 1 looks like, broken down into six different parts. And so, please know that once we finalize this phasing, we will be communicating to the community to let them know what it looks like. Do you have a question?
I didn't write down. So, the anticipated start date is March 1st. What's the anticipated end date?
So, we don't have one yet, and that's just gonna depend on how much the city will allow us to work in downtown.
What would be the window, minimum, maximum?
Um, I'd say two.
All park.
Okay.
So, in an ideal world, if we could work 10 hours a day, every single day, to do the civil, and then followed by the electrical, it would probably be somewhere around two years to finish the project. However, when we go to permitting, and when we present Phase 1, we will get a better idea for how long we will be able to work, how many hours a day, and what timeframe, and that will help us dictate exactly how we're gonna phase the project. So, we need, you know, your support in order to help create those phasings.
So, it's how many hours a day?
Exactly.
That's the biggest factor?
Exactly. How many hours a day, and how many days in a week, and how many months you will allow the work to pursue. Again, adding lags, because we don't know what we will hit once we start digging and changing out vaults.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't understand that last part. You don't know what you'll hit?
Well, when we go in to replace the first vault, there may be other utilities in the way, there may be, you know, other issues that we yet don't know, because we haven't uncovered the earth there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, so the next thing I'd like to talk about is our above-ground equipment. Originally, we had identified 12 different locations, and we have now narrowed it to eight locations. Basically, the above-ground equipment is the padmated transformers. And so, the above-ground equipment is gonna reduce outages significantly, as it usually takes SE crews longer to locate, repair, and replace failed underground equipment and components. If water is present in the underground vault, it must be removed before working, and that adds another challenge when trying to restore power quicker. Routine maintenance activities will be performed faster, as employees will not need to open the lid, test for combustible gas, and breathable oxygen. So, these necessary activities significantly increase the time to restore electric service. And traffic will be less impactful in certain situations, road closure versus having a lane closure. So, I'll go ahead and show the eight locations that we are proposing. First one is at 16 West Corial Street, right behind Saks Fifth Avenue Department Store. Second location is 19 East Annapamoo. 1259 Ana Capa Street, next to a parking garage. 215 East Figueroa Street, in front of a police station. West Figueroa Street and Chapala Street, in a parking lot. Annapamoo and Chapala Street, in a parking lot across from Manuscript Library. Ana Capa Street and Coda, next to a different parking garage. And lastly, East Corial Street and Santa Barbara Street, next to Probation Building. So, this diagram here shows what our clearances need to be for the above-ground equipment, and this is very important for the aesthetics of this equipment. So, currently, we're working with city staff to present what these final, what these final equipment will look like, as far as landscaping. Here's a brochure that we normally give our customers, to give them ideas what they can do to hide this equipment, either using grounding or high hedges to cover the equipment. Here's an example of what Anaheim Public Utilities is doing. Their clearances are very similar to ours, and this is just a layout to show what they do in their cities as well. Another option that we give to our customers is digital wrapping and painting of the equipment. What happens is the customer gets a third party to come in and paint the equipment, and Edison signs off on it. Here are some examples. Customers have painted murals on them, or painted them to blend in with the walls behind Here, the next couple of slides are just gonna show examples from other cities. So, the city of Ventura, in 2007, we went out and installed...
Is it, if I could ask you? Question, question. The visuals are interesting. What sound is emanating from these typically? You get a buzz, or a hum, or anything out of it, or...
They're...
Nothing?
Some of them do, but not all of them, I mean.
I mean, is it noticeable? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, the equipment does have a humming. They will have a humming sound. We have had many of them tested from customers, you know, just wanting to know the noise level, and they all are within the ordinance, the noise-level ordinances. Sometimes they're a little louder, sometimes they're just really mild. I think where they're at, and all of the other, you know, noises around downtown area, you know, you probably won't even notice it.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, what city of... So, we installed utility boxes in downtown Ventura, and what the city did is they put together a community project where they had residents turn in their paintings, and selected the top five artists to come out and paint these boxes during their art walk and use them as an exhibit. And I've seen them myself. A lot of them are contemporary art. The boxes located closer to the beach have ocean themes on them. City of Burbank did something very similar. They recruited local artists to paint original murals on them. And City of Glendale did the exact same thing. They had artists come out and paint the boxes with different murals on them. So, I'll go ahead and shift the presentation to Rondi to go into details about community outreach. Thank you.
I think you have all seen this slide quite a few times now. We are committed to doing our best to communicate to the community at large, the business community, city officials, residents, tourists, anyone coming to the area, the impacts of our construction work downtown, and kind of using this project. We're trying to come into the 21st century at Edison and have that social media folks in our local Public Affairs Department now. So, we're really looking at exploring some new ideas here. As I mentioned, not just, you know, utilizing our downtown Santa Barbara friends, and, you know, they've been willing to help push the word out through their networks, the Chamber, the city. I know on your website, you have little hard hats for the construction work you're doing, and the city's been gracious enough to say that we can kind of plug into that system, but also those folks who may not live here, who may be coming in for dinner for the night or a concert for the night, really trying to target them through social media. So, we're really looking at some creative ways. Carolina also alluded to January. If we stay on track to start this work in March, we'd like to host an open house. We did something similar a few years back to talk about some of the projects we're working on, to invite everyone from the community to learn about the phasing of the project and what those impacts will be. So, we're really open to any ideas that you may have to get this, you know, outreach out to the community.
You have a question for Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Guthrie, we've spoken about this before, and you just hit on the city's website. A few years back, we invested in a software package to create a project GIS system, which I assume is up and running, and the idea, of course, would be for the public to be able to access exactly what city projects were going on, necessarily private projects like yourself, but do you envision the coordination of, once you get all the pieces in place, and I understand there's a lot of moving pieces, that the average citizen would be able to plug in and say, what's going on on this corner at this date, and, you know, something you could update, I think, relatively easily?
Yes, that is exactly what we're envisioning for this project, that we will have a place to go. We have a website on SCE, a vanity site on our own website that will be specific to this project, that we can direct people to, where, yeah, we will be on this street during this week, you know, lane closure, road closure, sidewalk closure, you know, whatever those impacts might be, that people will be able to see that on a weekly, bi-weekly basis. We'll have message boards downtown, as you've seen. We'll utilize the media when we can, but definitely, to your point, working with, like I said, our partners at the city and in the business community, and directing as many people as we can to specific sites to let them know what those specific impacts that week will be.
And speaking of partners, you often, you use a lot of subcontractors, you know, people to do the barricades, people to do the potholing and whatnot, and it's not always clear to me that Edison and those contractors have exactly the same timing, and I've seen barricades go up and the project not happen, the barricades come back down. Is there a concerted effort or plan on your part to kind of tighten that loop a little bit, since we're gonna do such a major, you know, scope of work in this extended period of time?
Turn that one over to Alicia.
So, to answer that question, when we do joint projects with other customers, that, you know, they do some work, other utilities do some work, you're right, you will see that. You know, one utility starts, and then the other one stops, and different things. In this particular project, it's... In this particular project, it's all Edison, basically. Yes, we will have contractors working for us, whether it be traffic control or, you know, cranes or whatever we're going to need to do the job. But we are going to need to work with the city. Once we lay out that project, we're going to have to talk to the-- We're going to have to work with the city, who's going to be issuing the permits, to be working with them as well and letting them know, you know, when we're going to do and what phase of the job. So, yes, the answer would be all of our contractors should be in line with the permits that have been granted.
And do you anticipate, or has there been assigned a point person for the city, somebody that's going to be the lead engineer specifically for this project, or?
We have not. We still need to meet with them to talk about Phase 1, to talk about how we would phase that particular project, the construction piece of it.
And I'm sorry to have all these questions, but I--
Sure, that's okay. It's a big project.
According to, as I have read your chart, we're going to end up with 23 underground vaults and 30 underground switches. Is that, am I reading that about right?
About right.
Okay. And I completely understand why going above ground would be so much superior in terms of response time and the number of personnel it takes. Is there any improvement in terms-- anticipated in terms of staffing and response for the underground vaults that will remain? Because I know before, we had to wait for person number two to show up before we could go into the vault.
Yeah.
And that's always been an issue, and I know a lot of these vaults, you know, when there is a water table, are underwater.
Yeah.
So, in the eventual plans, the reliability plan, is there any extra response or staffing that's going to be part of the big picture?
Yeah, so as a company, we actually are really, really deep diving into our reliability metrics. How are we doing throughout the company? We actually have a team internally made up of about 10 different sub-teams at Edison to try and help us work towards reducing, improving our reliability. One of those teams is definitely working on, you know, what does that resource makeup actually look like, addressing the trouble. You're speaking to the troublemen, who actually are the first onsite responders. In the interim for Santa Barbara, I do have, when I know it's going to be a long holiday or a lot of load in the area or anything like that, we overstaff. Basically, we have two guys that we put on duty where we used to have one, and sometimes we actually even keep a crew for the whole weekend. We give them light-type work so that they're more available.
And there's a last question, I promise. In terms of the working hours--
Yes.
You know, Santa Barbara's got an interesting mix of downtown businesses. A lot of them work towards serving, which means they're not nine to five. So, how will you coordinate the timing and how-- with whom will you coordinate in terms of trying to do a number of addresses or a number of accounts in that business mix? Because obviously, everybody's going to have different interests in how we do that.
Yeah, so we're going to coordinate-- Obviously, we will come to the table with how we would like to work, right? There's expenses, you know, how much you pay for premium time if they work over and that sort of stuff. So, we will work with your permit department to first allocate what hours will you allow us to work, right? And so, depending on those hours and the type of work we need to perform, if we're going to do a lane closure, and maybe we can work in the morning, you know, from 7:00 in the morning till 11:00, and then stop from 11:00 to 1:00, you know, for the lunches and then start again. You know, we have to coordinate all of that once those parameters are given to us.
So, the knowledge of our city staff, our local engineers--
Will help us, absolutely.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hotchkiss?
Quick question, Ms. Guthrie. In your media mix, are you including television, you do TV spots? Bought TV spots? Either cable or?
I don't think we're anticipating buying TV spots.
Because that's a really effective way to get some attention, and it could drive people to the websites that we're talking about up here.
It's something we can certainly look into.
Yeah, it's expensive. Well, if you do cable, it's not expensive.
Right. We can look into it, but I don't know that it's--
Okay, thank you.
--part of the current plan.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Are you done?
Yes, that's our presentation.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hart?
Yes. I really would appreciate Edison's work. You know, this has been a long conversation, and it started off, you know, about the reliability of the lines, and you stepped up last winter with the generators that you brought into town to cover that in case we had the El Nino storms. I'm curious if you're sort of thinking in those terms, you know, with the weather reports are different this year, I don't think we're anticipating that. It'd be great to have a little bit of that, but not as much as was feared. But are you planning to bring generators in every winter as part of a preventive strategy, or is that-- Is that a one-time thing?
It's not in our current plan now. If we see some kind of El Nino type of thing where we really feel that there's a severe threat, again, talking about the transmission towers on the side of the mountain--
Right.
The whole mountain would have to slide down to bring those towers down. So, an El Nino or a heavy rain event could perhaps do that. Fire is not going to bring a mountainside down, so we're not worried about losing the structure. We may have some temporary impact to lines, and that's far, far more manageable in terms of restoring power in that scenario than something where we lose a tower altogether. So, right now, no. The cost parameters are enormous, and it was a cost that the company incurred, and we thought that the threat was high enough that, you know, we could do that. But the short term, no. Long term--
So, the long-term plan is the Santa Barbara-Galita Resiliency Plan, which is trying to get this systemically by providing the distributed renewable energy here in the South County. And the plan is the reactivation and refurbishment of the Peker Plant out in Elwood. And I appreciate you coming to that meeting with the Community Environmental Council. You heard my comments there. You know, I personally, and I think reflecting many of the comments that you heard or previously from public comment about folks in this community being actively engaged and interested in making Santa Barbara a leader for sustainability and addressing climate change. There's a lot of people that are concerned about the Elwood-Peker Plant. And I understand from the conversation that we had that, you know, ideally, you would get a great response to the RFP that you're putting out there in regards to distributed energy, and that could go a long way toward obviating the need for doing the Peker Plant to a degree, that there still remains some issue with the short-circuit duty problem, and that, you know, remains to be seen technologically, whether there's other ways to get around that. But I was encouraged by all that. One thing that occurs to me in regards to the city is that we're a major property owner in the area, and that we are, I think, in, when it comes to finding private sector companies that are going to respond to your RFP to provide power opportunities and storage, that the property owner element of that is probably one of the trickiest parts. You know, I think there are private sector energy operators that want to do this and want to provide this energy for a profit to you, and you're prepared to pay for it. The trick is who's going to-- Where are we going to cite these things? So, I think the city needs to be engaged in that at a fundamental level. I see Mr. Dewey's here, and I know we have a presentation coming up in December to talk about the city's D-SAL plant and what we might do to provide renewable energy to that. But I would love to have you think of us in terms of us being a resource for that conversation. We have, for example, the Vic Trace Reservoir is a large area that potentially could be the site for a power generation facility. We have our own hydro plant that we operate when we have rain and water comes down past the plant. We haven't had that. But potentially, we-- I've read about systems that use solar power to pump water to an elevation and then run that gravity feed past a generator to use in the off-solar hours as a battery generation or an off-peak generation. I don't know if that's feasible technologically with our facilities. I don't know if it's big enough to try, but that-- I know Mr. Dewey's looking at changes to the sewer treatment plant that might generate more methane that we could capture and use. So, I would love us to be a first conversation about potential energy supply as part of this RFP that you're looking to, to get the 105-megawatt gap. And I think that serves our interests and our values as a city, and it could very well serve as a great example to other major property owners, institutional property owners, the county, the city of Galita, the UCSB and City College, too, to also make their facilities available to make these things work.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate that offer, and from our side as well. We're happy to bring more subject matter experts here to have further dialogues. We're pretty good at putting together some of these meetings, and we'd be happy to do that even in advance of the RFO coming out so that people are very well-prepared and know what's being sought, so.
Well, your point that you'd like this area to be a leader and to be an example to your entire service area, we too want to be that. And the greater community beyond the city of Santa Barbara, including the whole South Coast, I think shares that value. So, we really want to work together cooperatively on this.
And again, I encourage the other council members to get ahold of that white paper. I think that there's some good information in there, as I shared up at Big Creek when Councilmember Dominguez was up with us, and I think it was communicated as well last week, that our vision of the future is really to look at using distributed energy resources for very localized need. And we certainly have that here in Santa Barbara, and we have an opportunity to really do something significant, and I'm hopeful that we can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Just a quick question. When we have a disaster of any sort, whether it's fire or rain, is there a disaster plan that you have? Do you send people up just to be on standby even though we don't have an immediate problem?
Yes, well, our company has done a lot in the emergency preparedness realms in the last three to four years. We learned a lot from a small disaster, really comparatively, down in the San Gabriel Valley, and we did a lot to implement emergency response plans throughout our company. We've instituted the Incident Command System so that we can immediately integrate with local first responders, fire departments, law enforcement. We set up our own Emergency Operations Center and our own emergency teams. We have rotating duties. We have several hundred people now in the company trained in emergency response. In terms of the local district here, they are also looped into that, and we are far ahead of ourselves several years ago in terms of that. In fact, I am now going to be heading up a new project to allow the local government representatives like yourselves to actually come down to our own EOC and see what we do. We've just completed the renovation of our Emergency Operations Center, and it's very state-of-the-art. And I look forward to an opportunity to invite some of you down and come see what we do. But we are very, very, very--
Okay, so let's be specific. When you hear there's a fire or whatever, who picks up-- Somebody pick up the phone and call 10 people and say, "Stand by," or call crews in?
So, in the event of a fire, we have several personnel who are former firefighters and who are electrical linemen, who actually embed and integrate themselves with the fire agencies. If it's CAL FIRE, if it's--
They come right up here?
They come right up here. They're right on the fire lines with our firefighters. So, they are giving firsthand, real-time information. In the event of a significant fire, we will immediately stand up an emergency response team.
Which is how big?
I don't know, it could be-- I'm thinking of the build-out, but it's about 25 to 30 people--
Oh, significant.
Staffing our-- And that's running the operations team, and then, of course, we have our local team here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
I want to say I'm optimistic with the conversations that have been going on, and a lot of the comments earlier today revolved around a recent election and changes in policy, and when we see lemons, we've got to make lemonade. I think one of the things now we see as an opportunity is local control. State's control is a big issue now at the national level. So, to the extent California, and this is where we can possibly talk later on amongst ourselves about any lobbying with Sacramento and the Utilities Commission, but there's just a lot of opportunities for changing how things are done. And I'm glad that Edison has been really open and pushing that. You talked about the pilot program, I think, is it South Orange County? And so, it was great to learn about that, and--
Preferred Resources Pilot, we call it.
Preferred Resources Pilot. And, you know, from the movement that we saw today, people want to try new things, so I'm glad that you're being open to that. And at the same time, what you need to do as a city, try to cut back our energy usage, and to the extent you can help staff with ideas on how we can build homes and buildings that are more energy-efficient and lighting that's more energy-efficient. I think we need to do both things, build up our capacity and ensure that. But if we're talking about a gap of 105 megawatts, how many megawatts can we take out of the system? How much can we lower that peak?
Right.
So, these are all things that both sides need to really be working on, and I'm emboldened. Thank you.
So, my areas of question are these, and they're following up from our previous conversation, and I think several of you were here that last time. There's a major amount of work that's going on downtown, and that's in response to a, perhaps we'd call it deferred maintenance, or anyway, work that happened longer ago than we'd like to remember, and now we're coming back and doing a major project in the downtown. My question's last time, and I'd like to see if there's an update to that, and it would come from both from Edison and perhaps from Mr. Dewey, is do we know better where we are in terms of the other-- the rest of the city? Okay, we've got the downtown, there's obviously a full campaign going on there. But, and my recollection, if I could just-- to go from our last meeting, was that something like 6% of the length of line that you have in this city is being replaced. Is that the case, or was it a different number? And so, that's one area I'd ask you, because we have all these other circuits, these, I mean, dizzying. It's really quite an elegant piece of modern art that we get to see there.
Thank you.
How are we doing vis-à-vis our entire city in terms of percentage and then age? And then, secondly, is how much are you educating our people in terms of, do our people know better now where we stand as a city? And I appreciate hearing if Mr. Dewey has learned anything, but anyway, first from you, how does-- How are we in terms of catching up and knowing the state of maintenance and of our entire system?
Hi. So, last time I was here with you, I shared a graph with you on the amount of structures that we had. I think I narrowed it down to the cable, the aging of the cable, and the aging of the structures. I can't recall at this moment because I don't have that slide exactly what the percentages was, but I do have that available, and we did share it the last time we were here. It was a high percentage of our structures that actually, you know, were tenured, they had a lot of age, but our cable was actually newer. So, we've been doing a lot of that. I also shared with you, you know, general order ordinance that requires us to actually do inspections based on the type of structure it is, based on the type of equipment it is. It has life cycles, inspection cycles that we do every single year, depending on the type of structure it is. And from there, we actually identify maintenance, whether it be repairs, replacements that need to be made, and we are in compliance, 99% compliance to that, so.
And are you sharing that information with city staff?
So, I did share it the last time I was here in that same presentation. Since then, we have not had that conversation, truthfully.
Okay. Then, thank you. And then, Mr. Dewey, have you learned-- How much have you learned in the last-- Since this effort really-- First of all, since the-- I won't call it a disaster, but at least the breaks that occurred, the blackouts that occurred. And then, do you feel like you're getting caught up more? Is there progress? Do you see places that you feel like there's more that you would like to know or that you'd like-- You are keen to know in this area?
Mayor Pro Tim White, yeah, we're learning things all the time. And of course, Edison has all the data on how old all the cable and these structures and all their equipment is, and we're learning more and more, you know, as we work through the process. So, I've learned quite a bit about the infrastructure feeding the downtown area and what the plan is going to be. And, you know, I think that it's a good plan for the downtown area. There's a lot of old equipment here in Santa Barbara, and, you know, so it's going to-- Edison's job really is to make sure that they have reliability to serve the whole community, and so they're going to come up with a plan for all of that and communicate that to us. And so, right now, we're really working on-- Working with Edison and coordinating as much of that as we can. And we do have a point person, and that's Supervising Engineer Adam Hendel. So, all the coordination is happening through Public Works Engineering at this point. So, I, you know, it's-- This whole process, I mean, it's a big process. There's a lot of people that are coordinating a lot of different pieces. We're learning little bits at a time as the projects roll out, but this is a step in the right direction.
Okay, and what I'm looking for is the next gap, the next piece that-- And also, I really hope that, you know, my efforts here are to improve the cross-pollination, as it were, between Edison and staff so that there's just a stronger awareness and stronger knowledge. And then, also, where can we, as a council, provide encouragement for the next step, as specifically as possible and in measurable metrics?
Yeah.
I know--
The biggest--
I'm putting you on the spot here, but-- I know, I'm putting you on the spot here, but, you know, you're our chief teammate in this area, so, but I want, I just want us to be able to pass that back to Edison and say, "Okay, Edison, this is great. We're making good progress. Where's the next step here?"
Our biggest vulnerability right now for the community is that 66 KV coastal line that comes up. And so that's not the main line that feeds us all the time. The main line's 220 KV. But if we lose that, you know, you've heard what the story is. We just don't have the energy to support the community. And that is where we need to really focus our attention. We need to get a plan together to maintain reliability if the 220 KV goes down.
Okay. So that's our focus. And then, let's, perhaps we could hear the timeline for that campaign at this point. Perhaps Edison could close the loop on this for us to sort of wrap that up. Where are we? Where do you, I know you mentioned some of these things, but perhaps this is just coming back around and emphasizing the most important item, the triage. This is it.
Yes. So in terms of the resiliency project, and that's closing that 105-megawatt gap, again, we're going out with an RFP. Actually, there's going to be two RFPs. One is a system-wide RFP for battery storage projects only, and local Santa Barbara bidders can bid into that as well. And we will look for opportunities to bring in some battery storage in that RFP. That'll be actually next month, is my understanding.
And so then, that would create battery storage by when?
We can, you know, again, those, some of those contracts have to be approved by the PUC. So we could implement some of those, I mean, depending on what the construction schedule of individual, you know, we can get them online as quickly as they can get them, we can get those contracts approved. Could be several months of approval time at the PUC.
2018?
Yeah, 2018 would be a fair, yeah. We're looking at, within the next one to two years, implementing those DER projects.
Okay, so battery storage by 2018, and then the other one was...
And whatever, you know, whatever renewable projects come in, and the RFP that we're going to launch in January, around January-ish.
The two RFPs. One was for battery, and what's the other one?
And one's specific for Santa Barbara. So the battery storage encompasses all of Southern California Edison service territory. The other RFP is going to be specific for distributed energy resource projects here in Santa Barbara, South Santa Barbara County. So that RFP will run, I don't know, 30 to 45 days. I'm not quite certain the length of time, but as soon as that closes, we hope to implement those projects, again, as soon as we can get the CPUC approval of the contracts within a one-to-two-year timeframe.
Okay, so those are a pair of 2018s?
Yes.
Okay.
Same with...
Publicly recorded?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, yeah, as quickly as we can. We want to get, and that's a very quick, quicker window to close, quicker gap to close than building a new transmission line, for sure.
Mr. Hart has another question there?
Just a clarification about the RFPs. That is not exclusive to local generators and contractors. That is Southern California-wide and...
Any third party that wants to come and, you know...
Good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Mr. Dewey, that line you were referring to, 60 KV or 62 KV or whatever, where does that line run?
It runs, well, it runs through our back hills, and actually, I think that there's two 66 KV lines with towers, and they...
That's a three.
Of course, Ryan Sisk would know. But it runs just along our front country area. And so, you know, anyone that's hiked in the area can see both of the 220 KV lines, which are the taller, newer-looking towers. And then, when you see the towers are a little bit shorter, a little bit older, that's the 66 KV lines.
Something you want to add?
The 66 KV aren't normally carrying load in Santa Barbara, so they originate in Ventura County. They are for emergency purposes only, really. So when we lose that 220, the two 220 KV lines, and we have to lose both of them, we then use those backup 66 KV tie lines to carry as much load in South Santa Barbara County as we possibly can. So one of the projects that Kathy mentioned is the San Barbara County Reliability Project, which has been around for quite some time, to reconductor those 66 KV lines so they can carry more load here in South Santa Barbara County.
And does this all happen automatically if something drops out?
It is not automatically. There is manual switching from our system operators. So they're always monitoring the system. They would see that the 220 KV lines had gone down, that the load in Galita has been dropped, and then they would manually, they would actually wait to see if the 220 comes back up, because it'll automatically test after a few seconds. But if they were to lock out and we were to confirm that they're out of service, then we would go ahead and start the process of energizing and picking up load via the 66 KV tie lines.
Does that take...
It does take a couple, probably upwards of an hour of manual switching, because we would have to make some changes, a lot of closing and opening of breakers. We basically would have to, the load ought to be dropped, we would have to isolate and slowly pick up the load. We just can't pick up everything at once, because we need to pick up to what level we can carry on those lines.
And when, any emergency like this happens, who do you contact here? Do you call the police? Do you call City Hall? Do you know?
It was the same process that Kathy mentioned earlier.
To refresh my mind.
Yeah, what?
Sorry?
Go ahead. Say it again.
Actually, she said it better than I can, so. This is what happens when you have an engineer talk.
There would be immediate connection with first responders from our Emergency Operations Center.
Call the police, 911 or something?
Yeah. Depending on the nature of the emergency, police, fire, whatever the situation was. But we would be well-engaged with notifying, city leaders would get notification immediately. We've set up an emergency notifications system whereby you all would be getting alerts on your phones, and we have a process in place, lots of procedures and processes, yes.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I see no more lights then. So thank you for your presentation. Obviously, this is a big project and a big step in the right direction. I look forward to this continuing to be a fleshing out of the full system, going beyond downtown to knowing and taking good care of our entire system over the long haul. So thank you very much. Okay, so moving along to item 12, the Temporary Beachway Bridge.
Mayor Pro Tem and council members, good afternoon. We're here to talk a little bit about the Temporary Beachway Bridge, but the story really starts back with the Cabrillo Beachway. And I don't know if any of you, well, you must have been present, some of you were present here in 1970s, where we got a grant to actually build a bikeway, a bike path along Cabrillo Park. And when we built that bikeway back in the '70s, it became very successful, not just for bikes, but for a lot of different users. We said, we noted that we were plagued by our success, and there's Suris, and there's actually many different vehicles that are constructed for the path to be rented and driven. We have roller bladers. It was, first it was roller skaters, then it was roller bladers, and then also joggers, and then also pedestrians. And because of the pedestrians primarily, when pedestrians walk on the path, they don't signal when they turn. They turn at right angles, and faster-moving vehicles can hit pedestrians. And ironically, it's usually the person on the bicycle that gets hurt. This was a concern that rose to the council's attention back in the '90s, and we actually commissioned some folks from other beachside communities to come help us write a report to solve some of the issues. And one of the recommendations in that report was a realignment of the beachway at Mission Creek. And so I wanted to show you an aerial, and I'm going to highlight the beachway where it is, where it runs. So for the most part, the beachway is separate from the sidewalk that's on Cabrillo, but in this case, across Mission Creek, this is the one place that comes in right adjacent to the sidewalk. And as it does, you can see some of the pictures of the area with the, this is the beachway, and then here's the sidewalk right here at Cabrillo, and you can see Mission Creek. And you can see the mix of users, pedestrians and cyclists, strollers, people on the bridge just kind of hanging out. It's a great view from there, good place to look out. And so the group from other communities suggested that we actually move the location of the beachway and create a separate bridge. And that's pretty much where it stopped. It went in the capital program, but that's where it stopped, because we didn't have the money for that. The challenges are right here, as the sidewalks connect right here. There's a large amount of users of the wharf that are going this direction to tour buses. And so the major issue is when pedestrians are taking the shortcut, as pedestrians would, you know, do, and it's the shortest distance right through this area, where you get the pedestrians and the cyclists and the quadricycles in a position that is most precarious, and there's the most conflicts. Also, the Sunday art show is staged on both sides of the beachway in this section, so you get people who are standing in front of art, and they don't recognize that they're standing in front of a travelway for recreation. So, very interestingly enough, when we were doing, looking at the bridge reconstruction, so we're now in the process, as you know, of reconstructing Cabrillo Bridge over Mission Creek. As a part of the construction process, there actually was proposed this temporary bridge. And the temporary bridge was to put in place for all the pedestrians and the beachway traffic to navigate the area during construction, but also carry the utilities that are in the area, that are on the bridge while it was being constructed. And so what we decided to do was, this was going to be a great opportunity to actually maybe leave that temporary bridge. We were going to put that bridge in, so let's, what a great idea. We can put the bridge and make it permanent and get to that point, that council action in the past of creating a separate bridge. So we went to the Historic Landmarks Commission and Planning Commission, and we started designing a bridge that was appropriate for the area. Planning Commission agreed that this was a good action. But when we got to the Coastal Commission staff, they were opposed to it, primarily because of the fact of sea level rise. And when sea level rise occurs, this bridge is further out towards the ocean, so the sea level rise would mean that this structure would be the first to go in that event. This is a picture of the construction and the temporary bridge as it is today. The construction's a little bit further down the road now. And here's some other pictures of the bridge and what it looks like over Mission Creek. We've adjusted the beachway path so that it connects to this bridge. You can see some of the utilities that are located on either side of the bridge, and then the beachway users on this bridge. This is what the bridge looks like from the wharf. So in order to, one of the things that happened at a recent meeting with the Coastal Commission Director is we asked about this bridge and, you know, a little bit more in-depth about why it was, you know, is there any way it could stay? And the response was, well, if it's temporary, if it's truly temporary, and when sea level rise occurs, and you pay to get, remove the bridge, and then you keep the existing beachway structure in place that you're building now, so that the beachway has a place to go once the bridge is removed, that perhaps we could consider that permitting effort. So in order to do that permitting effort, what we'd have to do is look at the CEQA-NIPA, this, according to the community development, is a rather abbreviated process. We'd return to Planning Commission to see if they still agree and would send forward the application to, for a coastal development permit to the Coastal Commission. As a part of that permit, we'd have to commit to removing the bridge when sea level rise did occur, so it would be more of a temporary situation. And then, the council would also need to understand that there's a, although we could, it would be a net zero cost to leave the bridge, it would be about $100,000 or more, escalated over time as we get into the future, to actually remove the bridge once it's time. And then finally, we'd have to go back to Historic Landmarks Commission for approval. So we're here at council today to get your direction and have a recommendation that you would direct us to try to permit this bridge and keep it. I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions of staff? Mr. Hotchkiss?
You're talking about sea level rise. That could be 1 inch or 10 feet. Which is the one we respond to? Do we have a specific number in mind so that we don't get trapped by this?
There's a variation of sea level rise that's predicted in the future, and it depends on how much it is projected, but actually, I'll turn to Mr. Hendel, because he has some of the predictions that were done in reports, the variation of years that that might happen.
Thank you. Adam Hendel, Principal Engineer. The figures for sea level rise vary. They have a low prediction and a high prediction that can vary greatly. And both of those predictions, Cabrillo Boulevard itself would be fairly inundated. The question is, is how far into Cabrillo Boulevard and how high over the bridge? So when we were looking at the bridge itself, Cabrillo Boulevard, Coastal Commission staff asked, well, what would you do to raise the bridge above sea level rise? And it was really infeasible from a standpoint of getting the bridge above sea level rise. So in both scenarios, eventually, in the lifetime of these bridges, the area would be inundated under the high sea level rise scenario. And those can vary, I think, between 20 inches and 55 inches.
So if it rose 20 inches, we may have to move the bridge?
That's correct, and sometime between 2030 and 2060.
Okay. Have we seen any rise like that so far? Where do we stand?
I have not.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right then, we have two public speakers. We have Eve Sanford, followed by Don Longstreet.
Good afternoon, City Council and Mayor Pro Tem White. On behalf of the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, I wanted to give comment on the topic of keeping the temporary bridge. So having reviewed the staff report for this and the plans, we strongly believe that keeping the temporary bridge will enhance the beachway experience for all users. Specifically, for bicyclists, it'll allow them to remain separate from most of the pedestrian traffic, which could enhance sort of the flow on the beachfront right now. Several of our members have expressed praise for the bridge and expressed surprise that it would be removed or be temporary. It's a great opportunity for enhancing the beachfront, and I would add that, much in the same way that we discourage pedestrians from using State Street, it's sort of a similar situation where if we could sort of route the bicyclists away from the market, you know, you would allow, it would allow for people, shoppers, and, you know, people sort of checking out the art, to be able to be separate from, you know, bicycles and Suris and things such as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Longstreet?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Don Longstreet, speaking on behalf of the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition and as a frequent commuter on the beachway path. I think the other parts that we'd like you to pay attention to is the fact that the only Class II bikeways we have running north and south continuously at this moment come down State Street to the Dolphin Fountain. And at that point, the beachway connects both the harbor and the entire east beach all the way down to the Bird Refuge and beyond. So the problem is that first 200 feet or so east of the pier is always crowded, when the tourist buses drop off, when we have the art show, when we have special events. And by doing, by keeping this bridge, we can double the effective footprint that we have. And as Ms. Sanford said, we can also start to separate the bicycle traffic from the pedestrian traffic. And I think in terms of what the pedestrians use the beach for, in terms of slow sightseeing and going to the market versus what most of the bicyclists are using it for, which is to get from one place to another, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, it's back to the council. Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem White. So, Mr. Dayton, the benefit of doing this is, will outweigh the cost of, because it's going to cost us a little bit to do this temporary fix, knowing that eventually we'll have to change things? Is that the basis of your recommendation, the benefits outweigh the cost?
Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Mario, that's correct. It's a, we see it as a safety benefit and clarifying where people are going so we can reduce the conflicts. The beachway is a very successful pathway, and so this will make it more successful and minimize those conflicts.
Thank you. I'd be prepared to make a motion. Any other lights?
We do have other lights, but we'll get back to you for a motion. All right. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Well, I was, once I saw the temporary bridge go in, I thought it was actually aesthetically very appropriate for the location. And I agree with Mr. Longstreet about the traffic jam, if you're trying to ride your bike, which I do frequently down that bike path... that bike path. So, it makes nothing but sense to do this. And, and I have to say, the eventuality that that bridge is a problem due to sea level rise, that's going to be probably one of the most, the smallest problems we have is going to be, you know, doing something with that bridge. So, I, I, I would like to, I'm sure I'm going to anticipate Ms. Murillo's motion, but I, I'm very supportive of staff recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Hotchkiss?
May I have a motion?
I'm sorry. Mr. Dominguez had a comment to make.
Living a few blocks from there and using that bridge probably three days a week, I'm super excited about it. It is a cluster there. You have bikers, walkers, skateboarder, rollerbladers, shopping carts, everything except RVs are right there, barely avoiding collisions. So, I think this is a great idea, and I would love to make this motion to, for the staff recommendation.
Ms. Murillo has, has...
It's his district, I think.
It is his district. Good, good for you. That's, I support that counsel.
One second, and I'm just going to make the, the recommended motion, which is to work with the Calif, to direct the staff to work with California Coastal Commission to permit the beachway bridge initially installed as temporary access over Mission Creek to remain after completion of the Cabrillo Bridge replacement project as a functional improvement to the multipurpose path.
Second.
There's a motion, second. And before we, we have a vote, I want to at least chime in. This, this project is, is, it's a, it's a happy spinoff from the Cabrillo Bridge project. And it's, it actually is performing a critical contribution to our, our, our life down there at the, on Cabrillo Boulevard. So, it's, I hope that we have an easy path for permitting this. And perhaps after the motion, I'll ask a question about that as well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. So, I do have a question about, are there pinch points in this permitting process that we could weigh in on anyway? Mr. Dayton?
I think that, I think to the question, this is, this is not a slam dunk. This is something we've, we've gotten a nod from the Coastal Commission Director himself. And so, this is about going through this process. Historic Landmarks Commission does have an opinion on, on the aesthetics of the area. The bridge that we took to them in the past was a, a concrete bridge, as they requested. This is different from that. We also have some issues that to be mindful of, that the contractor will probably be ready to pull that bridge out in mid-January. This process may travel beyond that. So, we may find ourselves in a position where we're trying to work with the contractors best we can to keep it while we're finding out the final decision. There might be some ambiguity there and some costs if we, if we don't get the final decision to go forward, and then we end up, okay, contractor, we do have to pull it out. So, those are some of the, the pitfalls of moving forward. We think it's worth the risks.
Okay. Well, that's, Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, I'm not sure. You're saying the contractor could make us pull it out because of the existing contract?
The contractor, at the end of the contract, he, he has, because this is a temporary bridge, he will pull it out and remove it. And that's all enclosed costs are all included in the contract.
But we just said, keep it.
Yeah. So, we say, we'll say we keep it. And so, there's a zero cost. He's saying, if you, if you allow me to, to leave it, it's zero cost for the, for us, the city. But if, for instance, if we get beyond and we're trying to, we say, hey, keep the bridge there, but we're still trying to figure out with the planning, the planning process to get approval, and then for some reason, we don't get approval, and then we come back to the contractor and say, okay, well, we do want to remove it now, then we may have to incur some costs to remove it at that time. And that's, that's the risk.
Okay. So, it's, it's in the Coastal Commission's court at this point. Thank you.
All right. Well, so, you have a motion or a project to go forward, and I think with strong council support. Okay. Thank you. All right. So, now, do we have any council member committee assignment reports? Ms. Murillo?
Thank you very much. So, as I mentioned earlier, our youth council and the West Side Neighborhood Association had a welcome the chief event, and that was yesterday. And it was well-attended, and there were some news stories on it. Please take a look. Awesome for our young people. I attended the fire and police pension meeting yesterday. And as you all know, there's two very elderly pensioners still on an old system. And their fund is limited, and there's a little bit of concern about how we're investing that money and, and if the fund will last as long as they're alive. So, that may come to us. On a lighter note, B.C. Centro, ah, the bike people left. We, they had a nice barbecue, thanking volunteers, because I, I worked on the bike count. So, that was, that was a nice party. The Rotary International did this cleanup at the West Side Boys and Girls Club, and we gave them a proclamation. It was really neat. Asta la Huego Fuego, which was our city fire department, taught fire safety to children living in our housing authority complexes. That was great and fun. And, and then the C3, excuse me, C3H Policy Council met and on Thursday morning, gosh, I don't have their agenda right in front of me. But we talked about something important. I think we looked at our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
Last week, I attended the Visit Santa Barbara Board of Directors meeting, and Adam Hendel made a presentation about the lower state, status of the Lower State Street and Cabrillo projects. And the board members were very impressed by his PowerPoint presentation and his comments, and were very congratulatory about the progress that's being made in all those public and private projects.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Attended the regular meeting of the Downtown Parking Committee, and we talked about the shuttle program, the new shuttles coming on board. And Director Estrada, the planning on announcing some free parking during the holidays, as well as a coordination of the Park Once Ride around town on the Shuttle to Shop plan, and trying to promote that both in, in the media outlets. And then I attended the Fighting Back Steering Committee and had a report from UCSB on Halloween, along with the sheriffs and the probation department. And of course, it was a very, very quiet Halloween. But a big shout out and kudos goes to the student group who took the initiative to change the dynamic and analyst through social media, and also on a continuing weekend basis, go out with student volunteers to the neighborhoods themselves and try to talk about alternative activities on weekends, the noise abatement, certainly alcohol abuse, you know, all into the recovery, sexual assault. So, their, the reason why I bring this up is an amazingly humbling experience to watch these students go out and appear for us and have such an effect. It's, it's, I think it's a, it's a great example, lessons well-learned as we go forward with our SNAP program around City College. So, very, very, very encouraging. Good stuff.
Great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Dominguez?
I attended the Access Advisory Committee, where our city attorney made a very strong presentation. And there was a lot of good conversation and ideas regarding parking and the ADA requirements.
Thank you. I attended the Kachuma Conservation Release Board meeting last Thursday, where we continue to grind on the response to the draft water rights release. It's a, obviously a, a big project. And, and, but that will be coming back. That needs to get wrapped up next month. So, you'll be hearing more about that then. On Saturday, I attended the Dan Secord Memorial, and it was a wonderful recounting of his life. Mr. Hotchkiss was there as well, and, and as well as the mayor. And truly a live wire of a man. And that evening, I presented the, at the Pearl Chase Society, I presented Callum DeForest with a, a city resolution on, on celebrating his 90th birthday. So, all good stuff. So, with that, I'll turn it back to our Madam Clerk.
Item number 13, conference with city attorney, anticipated litigation. Item number 14, conference with city attorney, pending litigation. The pending litigation is Jennifer McKenzie versus the City of Santa Barbara.
Great. And then we'll be back here at 6 o'clock for an evening session. Come on up, please. Just one. As you wish.
My name is Karen Johnson. I'm applying for a position on the Access Advisory Committee. I've served on it for the last three years. And we look over things that are, the city is considering building or adjusting to make sure there's access for all sorts of disabilities. There is a deaf person on the committee. There's two blind people. I'm in a wheelchair. It's whatever. And then there's a couple of able-bodied people. So, it's just, our want to do before something is built or started, to make sure there's going to be access, because it's very expensive to make access after it's already done, as we found several different items. And I was born in Santa Barbara. I've lived here most of my adult life. And I live over a pilgrim terrace off of Modoc. It's a lovely place to live, right on the bus line. So, I make good use of the bus. And I don't know what else I can tell you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss has a question.
If I could, you've been on the commission for some time now, right?
Yes, I have.
What, has, has it made a difference? I mean, do you feel that you all have really made a difference in?
Yes, very much so.
Tell me a little bit about that.
Well, let's see, if I can think of an example.
Some of the curbside access, for instance?
Curbside, curb cuts?
That's, yeah.
Yes. We, if there, there's a list of the way that Public Works does them. Sometimes something is brought to our attention that needs to be prioritized, because there's been a problem with somebody that's facing the continued, the right of passage is interrupted over and over and over again. So, on that case, if any work is being done on the corner, around the corner, then that triggers the...
It's included.
It's included automatically. They're expensive to do, so we keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Some of the other things that we were consulted regarding the Lobaral, and we all went down there to make sure that it was going to be advisable, that there was going to be handicapped seating, not just anywhere, but somewhere where we could get full enjoyment of whatever production is being...
That's great.
Yes. And let's see, several other things. I can't think of one now.
That's okay. Believe me, you made your point. Thanks very much. Thanks for your service, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. All right. Yes. Next. Yes. Come on up.
I'm Barbara Silver, and I'm applying for reappointment to this committee. I've been on for one term. When I came before you three years ago, I thought it would be really quick and easy for me to catch up with the work of the committee, given my background. But I found it was really tough going, because the committee meets only quarterly. Many things were in transition. There are no annual reports. There's no handbook. I think I'm just now effective. We were asked recently, last week, if the committee would advise council about oversized vehicle parking. But, you know, since we're constrained by the Brown Act and various other city protocols, it would be impossible for us even to begin to answer in less than six months. So, what I would like to ask is that council consider moving us to bi-monthly instead of quarterly, and to support the creation of annual reports and a handbook for the committee. When I applied last time, I said that when I was on the grand jury, after I went off, I created the website for the grand jury so that you can track the investigative reports, and they're indexed. So, I would be willing to take that on as a project to work with staff on both a handbook and a way to create annual reports.
Very sensible suggestions. Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to answer questions, too, if you have any more.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Fine. Thank you.
Okay. No. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else for Access Advisory Committee?
Good evening. My name is Janice Rodriguez, and I'd like to apply for one of the at-large positions on the Access Advisory Committee. I'm a fairly new member of the disabled community. I have a son that was in a car accident as a result of a drunk driver three and a half years ago. And since that time, we, I've become a mentor for families of families with spinal cord injury through the Christopher and Dana Reed Foundation. And also, I started at the Shepherd Spinal Center in Atlanta, where my son was in the rehabilitation hospital, started a walking program for family members to get them out of the hospital, talking about how they feel about their family's injuries, and supporting any questions and concerns, and just helping them along their path as they faced family members with new disabilities as well. I work for the Housing Authority, the City of Santa Barbara, as a, in the Resident Services Department. And we house many members of the community that are seniors and disabled people. So, I, I would like to participate on the, on the advisory committee on behalf of our, my company as well. I want to work to ensure that there's equal access for everyone in the city. The other participant talked about having curb cuts and accessibility for all. And I'd like to include in that the natural areas and the beauty of Santa Barbara, and having more access to, to those resources for people in our, in our community that are disabled as well. So, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Are there questions? All right. Thank you for your application. So, I think that's it for applicants for Access Advisory Committee. Next is Airport Commission. Architecture, oops, we have one for airport.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and commissioners. My name is Craig Arkery, and I'm here this evening to state my case to apply for another term at the Airport Commission. I'd like to take just a few moments to introduce myself, discuss the qualifications, I think, that make me good for this position, and finally, ask for your support. I was born and raised in upstate New York, and moved to this beautiful community in 1987 to escape the brutal northeast winters. I do still call my family in the middle of winter and tell them I'm mowing my lawn, just to get back to them. I have five children. Three of them are in public schools here in Santa Barbara. And three grandchildren, I'm happy to say, all of those kids and grandkids are within a few miles of where I'm standing here today. So, there's always somebody at the house. Like many, I moved from the East Coast to escape the winters, and as cliches it sounds, to build a better life for myself and my, my kids here in the Golden State. So, I came to work in Santa Barbara for a locally, locally-based technology company. And three years after doing that, I left and started my own business. And despite doing nearly everything wrong in that business, somehow it survived, including the recession of '91. I didn't know what a recession was at that point. Was sold to a large public company. Since that time, I've started in... Since that time, I've started and grown several businesses, some local, some out of the area, but within California. They range in size from a few million dollars to hundreds of millions of dollars of revenue. And through that time, I've employed thousands of people. I'm also very proud to tell you that I was the founder of Above All Aviation, which is today a premier flight school at our Santa Barbara Airport and is a very significant contributor to the local community, especially in outreach programs for at-risk kids. And you've probably seen some of the things in the news press to that effect. So I'd like to take a moment to gratuitously plug that organization while I'm here, and the new owners, Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan, who are carrying on an awesome tradition. So throughout my professional career as a businessperson and my personal interest in aviation, I've been both a business owner at the airport and I've been a consumer of both private and commercial aviation at our airport and airports all over the globe. And I can tell you without a doubt, from my perspective, we are privileged to have a gem of an airport right here in our community. It's a wonderful gateway to Santa Barbara, Guelita, and the surrounding communities, and it's a truly valuable community asset. So I feel very privileged to be a part of the Airport Commission today. And I'm on several subcommittees, including the Budget Committee, which is a very important committee because we're, of course, as you know, a self-sustaining entity. And that's a tough prospect in today's budget times. So very happy and proud to be part of that. So I humbly ask for your support. I feel that my community roots, the business background, and my current position on the commission and the committees gives me the experience, skills, and judgment to serve in that capacity. We're, as you, I think, know, now embarking, after completing a very extensive airport master plan, we're now embarking on the implementation of that master plan. And that's a very, very important process that I hope to remain involved in. So if there's no questions, thank you very much and good night.
Do you have any questions? Okay. Well, thank you for your application and thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
All right. Well, I think we are now ready for the proclamation honoring the United Boys and Girls Club Gold Star students. So let's take an interruption to our interview process for that. Hi, welcome. So this is a great evening where we have this group of wonderful youngsters and Michael Baker, who is their fearless leader. And the Gold Star status is to have attended the Boys and Girls Club for 100... 105 days. So each of these children has gone to the... Has been at the Boys and Girls Club for 105 times within the last year. Is that right? This year, during this calendar year. So I'm going to list their names. And first of all, on behalf of the Santa Barbara City Council, it's our pleasure to recognize the following students for achieving Gold Star status for their stellar attendance to the United Boys and Girls Clubs of Santa Barbara County, West Side Unit. And we hereby congratulate Ricardo Arechega, Harid Ayala, Brian Barreto, Anna Bautista, Guillermo Bautista, Robert Benitez Jamarillo... Harramillo, pardon. Angel De Broefle, David Chavez, or David Chavez, Ivan Chavez, Clarissa Rena Contreras, Ivan Contreras, Manuel Cesar Cuevas, Cesar Deloya, Abraham Diaz, Areli Dionisio, Alejandra Eli Duñez, or is it Duñez? David Alexis Estrada, Gabriela Flores, Yaresi Zelene Flores, Alexa Marina Fuentes, Vanessa Gallardo, Ivan García, Jennifer Yola García, Alejandro Román González, Andre Elisbeth González, Alexandra Gregorio, Gilbert Anthony Herrera, Giancarlo Herrera, Miguel Angel Higuera, Kevin Isaias, Sebastian Jimenez... Sebastian. Kevin Leva, Leonardo Leva, Victor López... Vincent López, Alexander Lucena, Cesar Martinez, Diego Gael Martinez, Leonette Leah Martinez, Victor Martinez. Son de la misma familia? Okay, bueno. Josué Medel, Christopher Mejía... Or is it Mejía? Where's Christopher? He didn't come today. Álvaro Melchor, Eddie Alberto Mora, Eric Mora, Eric Eduardo Moreno, Jonathan Núñez, Alina Orijuela, Angel Orijuela, Giovani Orijuela. So another grupo. Daniela Paredes, Edgar Paredes, Angel Plankarte, Daniel Plankarte, Vanessa Ramirez, Camila Robles, Cristian Fernando Santiago, Eduardo Soto, Kelsey Dayanira Torres, Alex Zapian, Melissa Zapian, and Angel Antonio Zuniga. And I once again congratulate all of you and again, Mr. Baker, for delivering this wonderful program to our community. So let's give a hand. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. We're very proud to be here tonight. Many of you are used to seeing me come here and speak to you. And this is the reason I love coming to the Boys and Girls Club every single day. This is what it's all about. I want to first acknowledge our board president that's here, Jim Crook. Thank you for being here, Jim. Appreciate you and all your service, your volunteer service. And as you know, I've told you before, we found out that on a national level that if a child attends a Boys and Girls Club 105 times in a calendar year, they're twice as likely to graduate high school on time and lead a healthy lifestyle. So you guys are well on your way to a bright future. And in the circumstances that we're in today, it's been a unique situation the last couple of weeks. And I can't think of a better example of what this country's all about than what's standing here right now. And I want to thank each and every one of these kids and their parents for trusting the Boys and Girls Club and having your children come on a daily basis. We promise you that we're going to take good care of them. And they're in good hands. And to that point, I really would be remiss if I didn't... You know, I get a lot of the credit for the work that's done in the clubs. And I don't work with the kids nearly as much as I would like to. I love working with children. But the person that deserves the credit for the kids that are in this room right now is Priscilla Hernandez, who is the club director of our West Side Club. Priscilla, please stand up and be recognized. Absolutely outstanding job. And with that, I have a special presentation for each and every one of you. And my wife reminds me every single day that I don't have much power in life, but I have the power to do this. And with that, each and every one of you is now a gold card member of the United Boys and Girls Club of Santa Barbara County. And I'd like to present these to... And Paul, you get one, too. They're for everybody. So you guys can use them. They don't get you a discount anywhere, just so you know that. Okay? But it'll get you into any Boys and Girls Club. And you're more than welcome to bring those down to the Boys and Girls Clubs and wear them with pride. But again, thank you all very much for this. It's such an honor. There was only... Out of all the kids that are here, there was only two of them that had ever even been in this building before. So again, I want to thank you for taking that. It just tells how special this community is. And Santa Barbara is a special place. And we're very lucky to have you in the leadership role that you're all in. And thank you again for recognizing our kids. Thank you.
I have a question for the kids, if I may. Hey, kids. What's the best Boys and Girls Club in Santa Barbara?
West Side.
And two more questions. Who's the best center director? And then what about Mr. Baker? Is he great or what?
Yeah!
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Witsh... Witshasch, we're back to the Architectural Board of Review. And thank you, Michael. Nope. Fire away.
Mayor Protem, members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Howard Witshasch. I am a... Better? I currently serve on the Architectural Board of Review, and I'm here tonight seeking reappointment. During the last four years, my observation is that the community is best served when there is a mutually respectful dialogue between ABR members, applicants and their agents, business and property owners, builders and developers, city staff, and the public. While project applications are reviewed case by case, over time, their cumulative effect goes beyond the architectural correctness of any one single project and impacts our neighborhoods, our community, our resources, and our quality of life. The ABR reviews many types of projects. AUD projects, for example, have great potential to adversely impact established one- and two-story residential neighborhoods by increasing population density, building size, vehicular traffic and parking, and reducing on-grade open space. Another example is the proliferation of telecommunications devices in the public right-of-way, whether pole or ground-mounted, which gradually erode our public and private skyline views. The EBR, along with HLC and SFDB, is tasked with guiding Santa Barbara's future growth and development architecturally. Published design guidelines and review standards provide excellent tools for design review, while maintaining a respectful dialogue enables the process by which board members and applicants can co-create with each other on each project. The qualities of objectivity, openness to new ideas, and the ability to reach consensus despite diverging points of view are as important to this process as any one single vision. I feel an equal responsibility to protect the process as well as the vision. Santa Barbara is a unique and beautiful place. The ABR needs intelligent, informed, vital discourse to keep it that way and to move it in the right direction. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Witshasch. Any questions, Mr. Witshasch? Thank you for your service and thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens. Civil Service Commission, I think we've already seen. Community Development and Human Services Committee. Creeks Advisory Committee.
Good evening. My name is Katie Klein, and I am willing and looking forward to devoting the necessary time to serve on the Creeks Advisory Committee. My educational background includes a bachelor's degree in Environmental Studies from UCSB and also a master's degree from Cal Poly Pomona in Landscape Architecture. My professional experience also provides me with the skills to be a successful voice on the committee. Prior to getting my master's at Cal Poly, I worked for Guelita Water District in water conservation. And there I did water audits and worked with the public and also gained valuable experience on water resources in the community. And when I got my master's, I've been interested in water resources and water issues since the beginning at UCSB. But I did my master's project on managing stormwater with the City of LA through Greenways before it enters the LA River. My professional experience also provides me with the skills to be a successful voice. Not only my experience with Guelita Water District, but for the last three years here in Santa Barbara, I've been working for a landscape architecture firm. And there, we work on many public projects, commercial projects, hotels, multifamily, as well as residential projects. And every project we deal with deals with stormwater management and BMPs, low-impact development. And that has been valuable experience as well. Priorities would be, wherever feasible, restoring creeks and installing BMPs. A lot of the projects that we work on also are near creeks, and we have to work with biologists and provide mitigation reports and work with all of that monitoring as well. So that would be a priority, as well as vegetation. As a landscape architect and designer, vegetation is really important for treatment prior to entering the ocean. And also providing educational opportunities and accessible examples of these projects, I really believe, is important for the community. Why I would like to be appointed is because I'm passionate about stormwater issues in creeks here in Santa Barbara. And I want to be more involved in restoration projects and facilitate more public education of our waterways. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Dominguez?
I just wanted to say thank you for giving us the priorities. That really helps us understand why you're here and what you want to do. They were great.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Great. Well, thank you for your application. Is there anybody else for the Creeks Advisory Committee?
Good evening, council members. My name is Whitney Wilkinson, and I'm before you today to request that you appoint me for the first time to the Creeks Advisory Committee. I think my education, experience, and pragmatic passion for the responsible stewardship of our creeks and water quality issues makes me uniquely qualified for the position. I have a bachelor's of science in biology and environmental studies from UCSB and a master's degree from the Bren School of Environmental Science and Management, where I specialized in water resource management and conservation planning. Although I have a full-time job, I would be devoted to this position and its duties. I am currently a staff biologist for the Ventura County Planning Division that combines my understanding of the science and the regulatory framework associated with creeks, water quality, and stormwater issues. Part of my job is to review biological assessments for development as well as restoration plans. And I think this gives me expertise that I think would be valuable to the committee. I'm also very familiar with SEQA and local land use issues and have experienced planning and implementing public education and outreach programs. As a consultant, I helped the City of Guelita implement their stormwater management plan as well. If appointed, I would work to ensure that the committee's priorities are to continue to support and advise or counsel in prioritizing restoration and water quality improvement projects as well as education and outreach programs, which I feel is a very important component of maintaining healthy creeks. I'd also like to ensure that the committee's recommendations are cost-effective, based on the best available science, and take into account the interests of all citizens. Finally, I want to be appointed to this committee because I'm passionate about maintaining and enhancing the creeks that we have in the city because I understand how fragile and how unique it is to still have viable creeks in Southern California. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you for your application. Any others for Creek Advisory Committee? Okay. The Downtown Parking Committee.
Actually, my apologies. Could we go back to the Community Development and Human Services?
We can.
I'm sorry. I missed it when you said it.
That's all right. Could you give us your name, please?
Right. My name is Joanna Romo. I have been a resident of Santa Barbara since I was eight years old. And I am applying for the position of Community Development and Human Services Committee as a representative for the youth-oriented services. I have been helping my community for many years and even communities that have not been my own through the various positions that I have worked. For many years, I have worked in nonprofit and education to help youth and families have access to better living and education. I find that now I want to devote my time to help my community and keep Santa Barbara... I find that now I want to devote my time to help my community and keep Santa Barbara being safe, diverse, and welcoming. The reason why I want to be a part of the Community Development and Human Services Committee is to advise City Council in developing ideas that can help our community stay strong and keep flourishing. My experience in working in nonprofit taught me that it is important to listen to the needs of the community and help develop strategies that will increase safety, wellness, and equity. I currently work for CAC, Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara, as the Project Director of the Santa Barbara California Student Opportunity and Access Program, known as CALSOPE. And our program has helped families and students to access higher education and financial resources for underserved and underrepresented students for 34 years. CALSOPE has been an integral part in partnering with school districts and after-school programs to help students have better access to post-secondary opportunities. I feel that it is even more important to me now to help families, youth, and individuals in my community to feel safe and supported. I am highly motivated at helping to increase equity, wellness, and safety for our citizens in the City of Santa Barbara. Any questions?
Questions?
I'm sorry. Could you tell me your name again, please?
Joanna Romo.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you for your application.
Thank you.
So, back to Creeks. Anybody else for Creeks?
Mr. Mayor, I'm wondering, would it be possible to get people to submit their name on a list with committees so we can have access to this as we're going through it? Because I'm finding I'm spending the first 20 seconds flipping through here to find their pages, and I'm not able to focus on them and find their resumes. So I don't know if we could use just a speaker slip or something to make this flow smoother? Would that help other people?
Maybe they can say their name and wait a few seconds before talking while we find...
Give you a chance to flip, Drew.
Just pause for us. Thanks.
All right. We'll take a little bit more time before we start, then. Maybe we'll and we'll give you a little more heads up. How do we do that?
That's why I thought just having a list, everyone just sign in at the beginning might expedite, but either way works.
Next time, okay? That's right. That's true. Next year comes very soon, though. All right, Downtown Parking Committee. Anybody here for that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Janeway, and I'll give you a few seconds. Just raise your hands when you're ready.
J-A-N-E-W-A-Y?
As it sounds. I may look a little familiar because I applied for this a couple months ago. The seat was filled by another candidate, but I was asked to come back, as there is another seat open now, I understand. So just as a refresher, I have been working for about 10 years in the private healthcare sector here in Santa Barbara for a local medical management company. I'm a graduate of UCSB, and in my experience in healthcare, I have quite a bit of experience connecting services to pricing. I handle contract negotiations between independent healthcare providers and the various entities that support them, be it the insurance companies or the medical groups that are owed them for their services. So as a matter of connecting that to downtown parking, I understand the need to connect services to revenue, and sometimes services that are often overlooked or are in dire need of better support. This is my first foray into public service of any kind here locally, and I'd like to serve if I can to provide some feedback and perhaps objective feedback to our local committee.
Well, and thank you for your persistence. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Downtown Parking? Okay. Fire and Police Commission? Pension. Okay. I'm sorry. You're right. Fire and Police Pension. Popular.
Hello. My name is Gabe Dominocello.
Don't try to spell that.
Yeah, I'll spell it. It's D-O-M-I-N-O-C-I-E-L-O. I have been serving on the commission for four years, and a little background about it, if you don't know already, it was the Pension Commission was established in the '20s with several million dollars, and as the pensioners became older and older, they started dying. And now the pension is down to two people, and we are in the middle of a process of distributing the funds amongst the final two pensioners. And I thought it was going to be the last meeting yesterday. Was it yesterday, Kathy? Okay. And it isn't, so it's, we're probably going to need a few more meetings and get some more information, so please don't take me off in the middle of the process. Is there any questions? No?
Okay. Any questions? Well, thank you for handling that important...
No, it's good.
...remnant of an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Harbor Commission? Historic Landmarks Commission? Library Board? Living Wage Advisory Committee? Measure P? Neighborhood Advisory? Oh, okay. Bingo.
Members of the City Council, good evening. My name is May O'Mahony. I'll give you a minute to look that up. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to have me speak this evening. I applied for appointment to the Neighborhood Advisory Council, and I've prepared a brief statement to cover the general questions I was given for this interview. First of all, I am a freelance writer who focuses primarily on e-commerce, marketing, and journalism. I have been in this field for about 16 years now. I have lived in Santa Barbara for 33 years, including living and working downtown for 20, and have resided at my home in West Downtown for four years now. For some time, I've just been mulling over how I could better serve my community. I knew I could do more, reach out, engage with people in my neighborhood, but just didn't quite have a clear answer as how to go about doing that. However, when I saw the vacancies open for the Neighborhood Advisory Council, particularly the one in West Downtown, I thought, bingo, this is what I should explore. It represents neighborhood residents to ensure their concerns are addressed, and this is exactly what I want to do. It just goes without saying, I love living and working downtown and have a great interest in its well-being. I embrace all of its diversity, its history, its eccentricities, and of course, you know, it's lovely. It's amazing, vibrant place to live, and I feel so fortunate. So I'd like to make a contribution to help keep it as wonderful as it is, and also work towards making it more engaged, more informed, and a safe community for everyone. I also believe that I can apply my marketing and communication skills to the position to get information out to the community in an effective manner. I've done tons of email marketing databases and am pretty adept at getting information to people. And currently, I just make it a point to meet and talk to neighbors. I provide an open door if anyone needs anything. Currently, most requests I get are for lemons from my tree, which I am always eager to hand out. So anyway, I'm hoping you will see me fit to serve in a greater capacity, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your application. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening, City Council. It's Eve Sanford. I'll give you, for the, I'll give you a minute. Okay. Are we good? Okay, so back before you again today. I know you're used to seeing me in my capacity with SB Bike, speaking about, on behalf of SB Bike and the bicycle community on biking issues and active transportation. But I was interested in this, in serving on this because of being sort of in so many council meetings and interfacing with so many community organizations and having had the chance to learn about the range of issues that are out there in the community, everything from hearing about waste management to noise issues and access things with our community center and our park. In that, there's obviously a great amount of really well-qualified candidates for this. I reside in the downtown, in the West Downtown neighborhood, I believe. I would like to disconfirm that, but I would also be happy to serve in an at-large position, sort of role. And there seems to be a pattern emerging here of community members whose professional background kind of reflects and builds on their interest in the committee. I would say I'm not very different from that. I have a background in urban planning and a knowledge base of transportation and urban design issues, and I think I would be an asset in making decisions and creative thinking around that area. In terms of my priorities with the committee, I've had the pleasure of making connections and just building a network around a lot of really great nonprofits and small community groups that are sort of just, you know, starting from the ground up in the community, and I would love to serve as sort of a representative to both, like, help with their issues and also help them to be more aware of the resources we have as a community. And so that would be a personal goal of mine, increasing communication between neighborhood services and these groups, and serving as sort of a delegate of the group. And furthermore, working to ensure equal representation for all community members. Specifically, I think I come from a unique, not super unique, but a certain group of younger working professionals in Santa Barbara, or dare I say millennials. But I think that oftentimes millennials are somewhat in the Santa Barbara hustle and may not have the capacity to be attending meetings actively, and we do need to work to better sort of outreach to that community, make them feel welcome, make them aware of the resources that the city provides them, and better sort of facilitate the relationship between that group and between the city. So in that, with that, I would like to sort of, I guess, make my bid. Thank you.
Thank you. No questions? Okay, all right. No, thank you. Thank you for your application. All right. Anybody else for Neighborhood Advisory? Okay, then Parks and Recreation.
Hi, I'm Andrea Martinez Cohen, seeking reappointment. I was just before you guys, about six months ago. I didn't realize I was only appointed for a six-month term, so I'm here to apply, I guess, for the full term as a commissioner. I just sort of got, sunk my teeth in to the commission. I'm really enjoying it. I'm a resident of the East Side, a homeowner, 11 years in Santa Barbara, have this little baby, and I really am looking at the Parks and Rec Commission with a lens of children and safety. I'm looking forward to the six-year capital improvement plan that they're going to be presenting at the next meeting, and I just would like to continue contributing to the community. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Yes. What's the little bundle you have there?
This is Aya. She kind of is sleeping. She's kind of...
Oh, my gosh. She is so quiet.
Oh, look at that.
She's tired. It's time for bed.
Oh, sorry. Woke you up.
It's okay. It's Aya.
Thank you. Thank you both.
She's six months. Okay.
All right. Any other applicants for Parks and Recreation? Okay. Planning Commission? Rental Housing Mediation Task Force?
Members of the City Council, my name is Justin Doolam. I've been honored to serve on this board and as a mediator on behalf of the city for eight years. I'm here to request to be appointed to a third term. I was chair of the board for nearly three years, during which its existence was on the line due to tightening budgets, as I'm sure you all remember. I was proud of this council to have the wisdom to have saved the program at the 11th hour. It has since served thousands of Santa Barbians trying to navigate their housing issues, and I doubt you on the council need any explanation about how serious those are. Since my last appointment, I've been certified to have completed the city's course of advanced mediation training, and will be honored to continue to serve on the board if you approve. So again, thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for considering again my third appointment, and thank you to Kathy Maria in particular for being our liaison. It's been a real joy having a council member attend our meetings and really energizes the board. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Yes, I have a question. Do you see, you took a course in advanced mediation training?
It's the city's course, and it occurs over the course of the meetings, where we do training within the meetings, and it also, I would say, the real training comes at the mediations themselves, and you log enough hours, and the city has a criteria that you eventually meet after you've served long enough.
So that was really helpful?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Great.
Yeah, the skills of mediation are directly trained, and how to use those skills to resolve the conflicts, and it works fantastically well.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, well, thank you for your application and thank you for your service. Are there others? Okay. For the Rental Housing Mediation Board? Okay, Santa Barbara Youth Council. I don't think, don't look like there are any prospects here for that. Okay, Single Family Design Board, nobody. Sister Cities Committee?
Good evening. First of all, Councilwoman White, I'd like to commend you on your job earlier, recognizing those children. They had some pretty tough names to pronounce and you got through it pretty well.
Excuse me. Your name?
My name's Rafael. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, Rafael Vasquez. Yeah, so there were some tough names there, and you made it through pretty well, so I was pretty proud of that. It made me really excited. I was like, man, you made through like 30 names for those kids and got them all right. So, sorry, I'm a little nervous. It's the first time standing in front of a board like this. My name is Rafael, and I'd like to introduce myself here. I'm a new Santa Barbara resident and applying for a position on the Sister Cities Committee for this great city. Although I've only been here a short time, the city has had a meaningful impact on me, and I feel it is my duty to try and make a meaningful impact on the city in turn. For that, I'm applying for this position. I feel that since moving here, I have some time to give, and what better way to share my passion and love for this new city that I have experienced in my short time. I currently work as an Assistant Director of Finance for a hotel in downtown Santa Barbara, and I have extensive experience in hospitality. In addition, I feel that my life experience and communication skills would serve well in a position such as this, sharing my knowledge with visitors and people of different stripes from all over the world. I feel that my background makes me uniquely qualified for this position. I grew up on military bases my whole life, the son of an Air Force officer, and was exposed to other cultures throughout my childhood. I believe that this experience shaped me immensely and feel that it is important to experience this not only as individuals, but as a community. The Sister Cities program provides the means by which a city can obtain the many benefits of cultural exchange. In my personal life, I have also always been committed to volunteering and enthusiastic in my community involvement. Throughout the years, I volunteered at numerous nonprofit organizations, be it through my local parish in Napa, my Boy Scout troop, my high school, my college fraternity, and this continues into my adult life, as I give my time to numerous causes, including helping feed the homeless, tutoring urban youth, and lending a hand and sometimes two legs for walking at the local SPCA. In addition to my commitment to service, passion for volunteering, my education, international trade, and economic development, and my fluency in Spanish also make me a great candidate. I feel that this broad base of knowledge would be beneficial to the council as a whole, and I would also be able to provide a fresh voice, an outside but thoughtful perspective to every matter that we address. I feel that professionally, having made my career in hotels and hospitality, this illustrates my compassion and understanding for others, and this has allowed me to excel in this career, which I feel would be beneficial and important to the board, not only being able to host, but give that sense of welcome to visitors. I speak Spanish fluently, and our sister city of Puerto Vallarta is of significant interest to me, not only as it lies in Jalisco, but as I have some family roots there. I also plan on taking classes in Mandarin, a recent interest of mine, in light of continuing globalization and the importance of culture exchange to further my understanding in its most literal form of language. Thank you very much, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Are there questions for Mr. Vasquez? Okay, well, thank you for your application.
Thank you very much.
Trans, oh, anybody else for Sister Cities? Transportation and Circulation Committee? Water Commission?
Mike Kilborn. I'm applying for reappointment to the Water Commission. So, I, like I said, I'm applying for reappointment to the Water Commission. I am currently serving as the chair through, I believe, next summer. I started on the Water Commission approximately three years ago, and as someone else mentioned earlier, it's, when you first get appointed to this commission, it's a lot of information coming in. I've got a civil engineering and a lot of resources background, so I've got the technical side of things down, so there was a learning curve on my end as far as the political side and the processing side, and to see how things work. But I feel like I've learned a lot, and I've been able to share my knowledge and experience with the city, and I hope to continue to be a part of this commission and be able to help out as best I can in this kind of unprecedented time of drought that we're in. So, there's a lot of new policies and new projects coming up soon that are, I think, very important to this community and very important to keep the city running properly as a whole, and make sure we all have water that comes out of our taps when we turn the faucets on. So, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thank you for your service, and I guess we threw you in the shallow end of the pool on this one this time.
I was going to give the guy from the airport commission a firm shaking my finger tooth for mowing his lawn, because we're in a drought. We shouldn't be watering lawns, right? Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. So, I did not open the meeting with asking for public comment. Are there any public comments that is, anybody wants to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Now, are there people who are applying that I missed somewhere along the line? And if so, why don't you come on up and I'll, we'll interview you. Okay, all right. All right, and otherwise, we are adjourned.